Motion to move up with agenda items six A four and six A four eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Before you have gift acceptance to the fire department gift account from John J. Healy in the amount of $100.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We also have an anonymous gift to the animal shelter in the amount of $100 to be designated for dog food, vet care, cat food, and litter.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Chris, we at 7:05?
7:03.
Okay, we have two minutes till our hearing. There's nothing else, I want to move up. Everything else will take time.
We do have, through the chair, we do have one other on the agenda tonight under gift acceptance, donations for veterans cookout. I don't recall seeing anything in my packet about that. Are you going to give information on that?
Through the chair. It is my understanding that on August 19th, the Veterans Committee, the Town's Veterans Advisory Committee, voted to have a cookout for the veterans at the site of the Purple Heart Monument, and they would like to have it, I believe, on the weekend of September 6th. I think it's actually September 7th on Saturday is the date that they voted on. It was brought to our attention shortly thereafter that the food would be donated by one of the local posts. I'm looking at Fran Buchowski because he's on the committee, but it was my understanding that they're seeking to get donations for the food for the veterans cookout. So, given the fact that they had scheduled this prior to the next board meeting, we thought we should put something on the calendar tonight that would just be just a generic item so that whatever donations they do get for this veterans cookout, the board would graciously accept prior to the donations actually coming in. We don't have any defined information on that yet, but...
Mr. Benoski, would you mind coming up to the microphone? Ms. Benoski, do you have an idea of what the high end of these gifts would be? Would it be like 500 or 600, 1,000?
The calculations we did tonight prior to any donations being taken in, and there were a couple of people who verbally committed, but we don't have the cash in hand, is about $370.
Okay.
That it looks like if we don't get a couple of other promissory notes that come in from the standpoint of, there were several different organizations involved in donations. Hot dog and hamburger buns were coming from one gentleman. Several of the stores in the town have offered to donate certain things. Paper cups and napkins, hot dogs, ice cream, root beer, and it's all in the works. We just want to formalize everything. The chairs, the tables, all the stuff that goes into it, to have a formal log to give to Julie. I'm speaking basically out of turn because Dick Langvin is the chairman of the committee, and I was just going to sit tonight to listen to see if they were going to present to you the date, to see if it was okay with you guys with the 7th. We're anticipating there won't be a problem with it.
Well, certainly, we want to be sure that you're able to use any donations that you take in. So, if the board were to vote to accept donations up to $700 to be used for the, you know, specifically for the veterans cookout, do you feel that would be adequate?
Wayne Page had pledged $50 at our last meeting, and I'm assuming that's the one that's at the board right now that Mr. Grossman was referring to.
We actually, we don't have any before us. So, you mentioned you have $340 in commitments. If we made a motion, if we voted tonight to authorize the acceptance of up to $700 in gifts, would, do you think that would be adequate?
More than covered.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept up to...
No move.
Up to $700 in gifts to be used specifically for the veterans cookout.
And we do understand the rules and regulations about us soliciting...
Okay. Is there a second on that for discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grossman.
Just one thing as to where people can, should they want to participate in supporting this, who should they contact?
I would believe that would be Julie Jacobson's office.
Yeah, through the chair. I'm waiting to get more information on this. Since the committee got together, they...
Yep.
It's my understanding that they're going to be getting in touch with me with the details. I just happened to look into the vote, so I understood what they were looking to get on the calendar. My office, when they realized this last week, had explained to them that we need to have the donations accepted by the board. So, I think they weren't quite there yet, but given that there wasn't another board meeting, we didn't want us to stop it. So, at this point, we need to get a definitive date, a definitive time, find out how the committee intends to advertise, and are they looking for RSVPs? We don't have any of those details yet, but we need to do that quickly if it's only in two weeks.
Exactly, and that's where, we're just trying to tie up the last couple of in-the-air commitments to get them pegged down. We have some firm commitments already, and we have a list that we will give to Julie shortly, in the next day or two. We just submitted to her for discussion with you folks about that particular date. If there was a problem with having it that date, we would then have to back up and start looking for another date. No, but preliminary discussion has been for September 7th from 12 to 5 at the Purple Heart Monument area, and everything has fallen, we're finalizing everything to have a permanent in the next day or two plan to give to Julie, to give to the media. That's the one thing, is we want to get it out to, it's, all the veterans in town are invited, from all wars, and the hot dogs, hamburgers, root beer floats are the main agenda, and after that, we'll see how it goes.
So, you mentioned you have $340 in commitments. If we made a motion, if we voted tonight to authorize the acceptance of up to $700 in gifts, would, do you think that would be adequate?
More than covered.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept up to...
No move.
Up to $700 in gifts to be used specifically for the veterans cookout.
And we do understand the rules and regulations about us soliciting...
Okay. Is there a second on that for discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grossman.
Just one thing as to where people can, should they want to participate in supporting this, who should they contact?
I would believe that would be Julie Jacobson's office.
Yeah, through the chair. I'm waiting to get more information on this. Since the committee got together, they...
Yep.
It's my understanding that they're going to be getting in touch with me with the details. I just happened to look into the vote, so I understood what they were looking to get on the calendar. My office, when they realized this last week, had explained to them that we need to have the donations accepted by the board. So, I think they weren't quite there yet, but given that there wasn't another board meeting, we didn't want us to stop it. So, at this point, we need to get a definitive date, a definitive time, find out how the committee intends to advertise, and are they looking for RSVPs? We don't have any of those details yet, but we need to do that quickly if it's only in two weeks.
Exactly, and that's where, we're just trying to tie up the last couple of in-the-air commitments to get them pegged down. We have some firm commitments already, and we have a list that we will give to Julie shortly, in the next day or two. We just submitted to her for discussion with you folks about that particular date. If there was a problem with having it that date, we would then have to back up and start looking for another date. No, but with preliminary discussion has been for September 7th from 12 to 5 at the Purple Heart Monument area, and everything has fallen, we're finalizing everything to have a permanent in the next day or two plan to give to Julie, to give to the media. That's the one thing, is we want to get it out to, it's, all the veterans in town are invited, from all wars, and the hot dogs, hamburgers, root beer floats are the main agenda, and after that, we'll see how it goes.
So, we'll include in that motion for the cookout to be held September 7th. That way, if it's not held on September 7th, there will be time for them to come before the board with the gift acceptance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to open the hearing. The next item we have is the Gold Depot at 809 Southbridge Street, an alleged license violation hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
No move.
Is there a second? All those in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So, the hearing has been adequately advertised. Is the license holder here? Has the license holder been given proper notification?
Yes, he did receive notification.
Okay. Anyone anticipating testifying at this hearing, could you please come forward to be sworn Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? You are all duly sworn. Chief and detective, please join us. First, we'll hear testimony from the chief and the detective. Good evening. For the record, please.
I'd ask that you take testimony first from Detective Dyson with respect to the allegation that's before you.
Excuse me, hold on. Is the microphone on?
Doreen, can you, this is pretty serious, can you ask them?
Yeah, we can't have any conversation in the audience. We're conducting a license hearing, and everyone has been sworn in, and we need to hear what's happening at this hearing. Detective Dyson?
Yep, so I would ask that you take testimony first from Detective Dyson with respect to the hearing that's before you this evening.
Attorney O'Brien, you're welcome to move up to one of these chairs if you need to. Please, go ahead.
On August 6th, I was contacted by a neighboring detective, Detective James Hoover from the Webster Police Department. James Hoover told me he was investigating a theft of high-end jewelry. Detective Hoover told me he had a suspect in custody, and was actively interviewing the suspect. He asked me to go to the Gold Depot at 809 Southbridge Street. According to, according to James Hoover, the suspect indicated that he sold two bracelets and two pairs of earrings. One bracelet was worth approximately $10,000, one, another bracelet was worth $3,000, and according to the detective, the earrings were worth $2,500 apiece. He asked me to go there to confirm if he sold the jewelry there, and if he did in fact sell the jewelry there to seize the jewelry to give it back to the owner. Shortly thereafter, I went down to the Gold Depot. I positively identified the sales associate as Frank Conforti. I know Mr. Conforti, I've dealt with him from different incidents that we've had. I asked Mr. Conforti if I could look at the ledger from August 5th to see if the suspect had signed the ledger. I did not see the suspect's name on the ledger. I asked Mr. Conforti if he made any transactions or bought any jewelry without documenting on the ledger, and he told me no. And I said, specifically, I'm looking for a gold bracelet with diamonds worth approximately $10,000. And Mr. Conforti told me that they don't, they don't take in diamonds. And I told him, I told Mr. Conforti, at this time, the Webster Police Department actively had suspect in custody. He described the place where he sold the jewelry, and he described the sales associate, which is Frank Conforti. Mr. Conforti said at times, he would purchase jewelry if it's like a frequent, someone who frequents the place, frequents the establishment, and I asked him if there's a chance that he sold to the suspect, I gave the suspect's name, and he kept asking me what the suspect looked like. And I told him that the suspect indicated he sold two bracelets and two pairs of earrings. And he said, well, he goes, I'm not sure what's the suspect's name. And eventually, he told me that he did sell to the suspect. I asked him if he positively identified the suspect with a photo ID or a license, he said he did not. I asked him if I could inspect the jewelry. He said didn't have the jewelry on site, he will bring it tomorrow. But the next day, he did bring the jewelry in, we did recover both bracelets and one
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. And did you take possession of the jewelry?
I did.
You did?
I did, and I turned it over to Detective Hoover.
Attorney O'Brien, do you have any questions for the detective? Through the chair, please, and if you could identify yourself for the record.
Paul O'Brien, an attorney in the town of Auburn, and I'm here for the record to represent Anthony Bishai, the owner of the Gold Depot. Detective Dyson, I couldn't hear everything that you said in the beginning, so this is probably going to be going over old ground, but did you mention that you had met with Mr. Conforti on prior investigations? I couldn't really hear what you said.
Yes, we're always in the establishment, we're always inspecting the jewelry. We have recovered stolen jewelry there in the past.
I see. And have they been cooperating in the past?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all the questions you have for the detective?
That's really about it. I don't think that there's a very much division, as you would say perhaps, in the stories that Detective Dyson told to you, as well as what my client had imparted to me when we conferred it last, this past week. However, I would like to present some testimony from Mr. Bishai. I'd be very brief, and certainly, I'd like to weigh in on the outcome.
If you have no further questions for the detective, yes, I'll give you the opportunity. If you could identify who is with you, because we've heard Mr. Conforti, and then you said you want to speak for Mr. Bishai, so I would like to know who is with you.
This is Mr. Bishai. He's the owner.
He's the owner and the license holder.
Correct.
And...
Mr. Conforti was his employee.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Now, if you, instead of doing testimony, it would be all right if I just represent to you Mr. Bishai's background and how he came into this, and what it means to him? It doesn't really rise to the level of testimony relative to this particular incident, but I think it's important for you folks to hear it, if that's okay with the chair. Mr. Bishai has been running this business for almost two and a half years. This is his sole source of income, it's his business, he cares for it very much, and he, this is not just a hobby for him, it's not just a lark, it's important. He's a single man, he lives across the street from his mother, and he's part of her support as well, and she's disabled. As Detective Dyson has said earlier, he has cooperated with them in the past in these investigations. On this particular day, Mr. Conforti was in the building on his own. He's a 72-year-old man, he sometimes gets very nervous, and he starts to talk a lot, and he apparently didn't do what he should do, which was to get a picture. Part of that problem was that Mr. Bishai was at Best Buy in Millbury getting toner for the copy machine to be able to do that. I have the ticket, and I gave you a copy of that, just so you know that that is in fact on the day that that happened, and it actually has a timestamp on it as well. I will tell you that Mr. Bishai...
Just, excuse me, just for the record, Attorney O'Brien has referenced Best Buy receipt for a twin pack of Brother ink cartridges that were purchased on August 5th at 12:39.
In addition, on that two-page packet, there's a picture of Mr. Zelowski, I think it is, the person who sold the gold to the Gold Depot. That had been taken back in March, pardon?
That was '07. That's supposed to be '07.
'07, oh, in July. In July, and Mr. Conforti did not apparently, was aware of having had that in the record, so I'm not saying that he didn't have a violation here, because he did not take a picture of the, he generally takes pictures of everything that comes in, he didn't do that. And we didn't take in, my point is, didn't take in a license, which he should have done on that day. But for the most part, he complied. But there was obviously a gap, he didn't take down the license number that day, didn't have the picture of the license, and my client realizes that this is a violation, and he understands that, that he has to stand behind that, and he has to make amends.
Is that...
Oh, there's one other thing. I just want to let you know, let you know that he does do a lot of pictures. This is from January to now. I showed that to you just to make sure that you understand that he does take this seriously. He does know that's his livelihood, and he does want to follow the rules, and by and large, he has done that. So, I think that's all really we have to present to you, and we would ask that you allow him to continue. I know that there'll be some sort of penalty, and we expect that, and I would, I imagine that you will be reasonable, as you have in the past, and that's all I have.
And that's all you have? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Detective Dyson, do you have any questions for the...
No.
License holder?
No.
Chief? Any questions for the license holder specifically? No?
No.
Okay. I'll now open it up to board member questions, either the detective or the license holder. Mr. Grossman first?
One concern, it seems ironic that we've got an employee that had to leave the premises to go to get toner, and in the prior instance, whether it was your business, I don't remember...
It was not.
Or whether it was the other company, had to leave to go to get toner.
You know, I saw the article about that other business, and I said, oh, this is not a great excuse, you know? It's almost like my dog ate my homework. But in fact, he was there, and I don't think he's going to be out of toner ever, ever Talked about, you know, buy more before you open the last case. But in all seriousness, he does realize that there are rules here, he knows the rules, and Mr. Conforti unfortunately, you know, wasn't able to comply. My client was off getting the toner, Mr. Conforti was in the store. Now, he probably should not have just taken it, not taken it in at all, and told the guy to come back later. I'm not sure that would have helped out any, because then he would have probably been chasing around someplace else, trying to find where that gold was, but as I said, he does, he does want to abide by the rules, by and large, he has. He wants that to continue to be his business, and he, he understands that he's got to comply.
So, I actually have a couple of questions here...
Sure.
Because I want it on the record. Are you, you're familiar with your license, you've seen your license? Have you read the conditions of your license? Okay. So, Attorney O'Brien, you focused on the license, the picture ID, and admit to that, that that was a violation. In the conditions of the license, a logbook should be kept that includes the name of the seller, the date of the sale, the time of the sale, the license plate of the seller's car, a description of the items, and the copy of the seller's photo identification. Would you agree that none of that happened?
That is correct.
Detective Dyson stated that this happened on 8/5, and the jewelry was returned to the site on 8/6. Again, reading from the license, all gold and records must be kept on-site for 60 days, and all records and logs must be kept up-to-date, and must be available by members of the Auburn Police during regular business hours. Would you agree that you did not comply with that condition?
Yes.
And that the jewelry was taken off-site?
I would, but I, to actually get back to Mr. Grossman's question, which is basically what you're asking me again, is that my client takes his valuables and puts them in a safe deposit box in a local bank, because he feels it's more secure than his storefront. The storefront is way less secure than the bank. If you consider that, that is wrong, then we will discontinue that.
I can only speak for myself, but it probably, where it's a condition of his license, it probably would have been wise to come before this board and tell this board that my client isn't keeping the jewelry on-site, notify the Auburn Police where the jewelry is being kept, and the board may have modified the license, but the license that your client accepted said that the jewelry must be kept on-site. I appreciate the fact that he tried to keep it safe, but we have to go by the conditions of the license. I don't know if you want your client to speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you guys know, when the new license had come out with the laws that I need to abide by, with the essence of the whole, keeping the jewelry at the location, I didn't feel comfortable. I actually had a face-to-face talk with Chief Sluckis about this. He came into my establishment, and he had talked to me about it. I had expressed to him and told him that this is my life savings, this is everything I've worked for as hard as I can. I do not feel comfortable putting my head on the pillow at night, knowing that somebody could break into my business and steal everything that I've worked so hard for. The gold is just literally less than a mile away in a bank, and if they come, you know, during business hours, I can get a phone call, I can run there, I can go get the stuff and get it there as soon as possible. And he seemed okay with that by the time we were done talking. Just wanted to let you know that, okay? Thank you.
Chief, did you want to comment?
That is correct. We did have that conversation.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to let members ask some question. I do have some additional questions regarding your employee, but I'll, Mr. Simonian first, and then Mrs. Brotherton.
I just want to go back to Detective Dyson for a second. The entire conversation that you related to us, that was with the sales associate, Mr. Bishai wasn't there?
Yes.
Okay, during that conversation. And he, it was, they don't take in diamonds?
He told me that, yes.
And he said they weren't on-site, then they would have them next day. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bishai, do you have any other sales associates there besides Mr. Conforti?
I have one, Joe Rudalonas as well, he works for me part-time.
Okay. Given the fact that, you know, you and Ms. O'Brien have, you know, said how important this is to you, how often, how often do you convey that to them? I mean, that any violation of the license directly impacts you?
All the time.
So, they're aware of the fact that it doesn't matter if it's you, if it's them, it's still your license, and you're the one who's affected, and your business is affected? They're aware of that?
Yes, they are.
Okay. How long have they worked for you?
Frank's probably been there about a little over a year now, and Joe was probably about six months or so.
And how often are they there when you're not there?
Probably say half the, half the time, probably four days out of the week.
Okay, so, when you're there, that's the only time they're supervised?
Right.
And the rest of the time, you just trust them to uphold the conditions of your license and not put your business in jeopardy?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it for right now, thanks.
Mrs. Brotherton? Mrs. Brotherton?
Good evening. Um, my first question, I believe, is going to be directed at the Auburn Police Department. Have there ever been any violations prior to this? Have you ever been contacted to the site? Have you ever had to research jewelry or have any other difficulties?
Um, we're always at these sites.
Yes, okay.
Um, sometimes we'll find things that, um, sometimes we won't take the license, sometimes it documented, but at least we, we were able to find out who the person was who, um, sold the jewelry. This particular time, nothing was documented.
Okay.
And then he denied it.
Okay. Um, number two, on that particular day, did Mr. Bishai offer to take you to the safe box or he just indicated that he would bring it in tomorrow?
Uh, the sales associate said he would bring it in.
That's right, Mr. Bishai wasn't there.
Brought in tomorrow, the next day.
Okay. And Mr. Bishai, um, may I ask you, how many hours do you feel as though you're there on the premises during work week?
Uh, between fifteen and twenty.
Uh, I'm sorry, sir?
Between fifteen and twenty.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other members before I move on? Mr. Simonian?
You said, you said that you read and, and were aware of all the conditions on your license, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, I'm just gonna... When you, when you applied for the license, do you recall, you know, I don't, not that speci-, everything specific to the day you got your license, but the day you came before this board, do you recall that?
Vaguely, yes.
Okay. Do you, do you recall that this board is the licensing authority? Do you recall hearing that?
Yes.
So, I, this is a comment rather than a question because I, I know that you spoke to the discussion that you had with Chief Slukis. However, we've been through this before and not with you, but the fact of the matter is, it doesn't matter who it is if it's not this board, who is the licensing authority. No one can tell you to change the conditions of your license or do something different. They can't give you that authority. And as the chair said, if you weren't comfortable with conditions of that license, the first thing you should have done is asked to come back before this board and work something out here. So, just for future reference, this is the licensing authority. It doesn't matter who walks in there. They cannot tell you to violate or, or do anything. And I'm not saying he told you to violate it. Let's, I, I don't want to misspeak. I'm just saying it doesn't matter. You can't change other than coming to this board. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mrs. Brotherton.
I'm sorry, sir. One more, one more follow-up question. You had indicated you were there about fifteen to twenty hours a week?
Yes.
Um, how many hours a week is the store open? What are your hours down there?
Uh, nine-thirty to five-thirty Monday through Saturday and eleven to four on Sundays. Usually I, I work there mostly on the weekends and probably most Wednesdays I'm there.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead, Mrs. Simonian.
Actually, just, just one last one. Nope, sorry. Um, my, so going forward, how do you make sure this doesn't happen again?
Well, I've had a, uh, definitely a talking with Mr. Conforti and also my other associate, Joe Rudolonis, about, uh, you know, how severe this, what happened and, and the penalties that definitely have come up, come be, because of it. And, um, I've told them that, you know, to make sure that I'm gonna be on top of them whenever they work every day, to make sure that they're definitely abiding by all the laws and the rules from here in the town of Auburn. And if they don't, then they're no longer gonna be working for me. But I can reassure you definitely, one-hundred percent, my point was across and it will never happen again. I can assure you of that.
All right, thanks.
So, I have some questions regarding, um, Mr. Conforti. Um, what, if any, action did you take when you realized that, um, not only did Mr. Conforti not follow the procedure on your license, but you then in fact learned that he lied to the Auburn Police Department regarding that jewelry that he took in?
Okay. Well, first, um, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Conforti about what happened and like, like we said before, he's, he's a seventy-two-year-old man. He's pretty much retired. Uh, he's a great employee. I mean, you know, he definitely made a mistake. He understands he made a mistake. He's, he's been, you know, sick over it as well as I have. And the last thing we want to do is lie to the authorities or not cooperate. And since we've been there, we've always cooperated completely with the authorities. I just think, um, when Detective Dyson came in and was questioning, I think he was a little bit confused of the situation until he found out the actual, the whole, the whole situation. And then he remembered and then he fully cooperated. And I just want the board to know that, you know, the jewelry was returned to the rightful owner. You know, there was nothing to hide. As soon as, as soon as we knew, we fully cooperated, just like we always do.
Um, going back to the day of requesting that the, you know, the jewelry be turned over, do you recall what time of day it was that you were first notified?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what time, uh, Detective Dyson came in and, uh, requested it. Um, but Mr. Conforti did tell him that we'd have the merchandise here the following morning and I had it there right as we opened. It was there that morning.
So, is, is, I guess, um, because of the way things happened and, you know, really kind of finding out that your employee lied to the Auburn Police, as the Licenseholder, I would have been very concerned at that point. Is there a reason you could not have returned the jewelry to that store that day?
Uh, no, I could have definitely returned it that day. Like I said, I was not sure what, what time it was. Um, and like I said, as he had, um, agreed with Detective Dyson, they agreed that it was okay with him that the stuff be brought there the next morning. If, if it was, uh, demanded there immediately, I would have dropped everything I was doing and made sure I got it there.
So, I can only speak for myself again, not for the rest of the board members, but I find it troubling that, again, we have jewelry that was brought in and it's the first time that we made this mistake. We do everything right all the time, but the one time that the suspect identifies your store as the place that he brought the jewelry, it's, "We've never done this. We're sorry." Like, it won't happen again. It just, for myself, doesn't sound believable. It sounds like a place that people know that they can bring their jewelry to and not be asked for identification and not be asked any questions. As a licensing, uh, licensing authority, that concerns me. There's always, no matter what the license is, whether it's a liquor store, there's always the underage drinkers that know where you can go to buy the beer to get, you know, that they're not gonna ask you for your ID. There's the gold shop where they know that they can go and you're not gonna ask any questions. Because a lot of the times, you don't have detectives like we have here that solve these cases so quickly and have the bad guy in the first twenty-four hours. I just, I'm concerned that you're not following proper procedure on a regular basis. Um, you, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, no, like I said, I'm sorry, sorry that you do feel that way, but it, but the honest-to-God truth is that, you know, we definitely do, as you see, um, that gentleman who was arrested that brought in the stuff, he was in less than a week before. We, as you can see, we took the copy of the license and a copy of all the materials right there. Um, like I said, the ink was really honest-to-God, under oath, was out. And I did purchase it that Monday morning and I have the receipt for that as well.
Okay. So, are you, are you telling me now that, that he was in your store the week prior to this as well?
Yes.
So, so?
But, uh, what I was, after speaking with Mr. Conforti, who was, who handled it, I was under the impression when, uh, he had dealt with, uh, the gentleman who sold me the stuff the, the week before, he had known him. Mr. Conforti didn't know the printer was out of ink. However, I, I guess, uh, Mr. Conforti bought it and was going to, because we have him already on file, as you can see in front of you.
Okay.
We do have a file on there. What he was gonna do was he was gonna, I guess, inform me once I brought the ink to the store that we needed to make copies of the stuff we bought and add it to his file where we have, we have his license on file. That's, that's what, I mean, there was no ever, never once thinking, wanted to hide anything or say he never came in here because that's not the case. If we did that, it, the first time he came in, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be on record either.
I have a, a question for Attorney O'Brien. The, the paper that you gave us
Yes.
Tonight is dated March twenty-ninth. Is the date wrong or is your client wrong?
Well, let me look at my copy.
Thank you.
Yeah. My client mentioned that when we presented.
He, yes, it's a, it's a seven. He's also in my logbook listed at my store under seven-twenty-nine. I do have him in my logbook as well for seven-twenty-nine that he came in.
Oh. So, it was seven-twenty-nine that he was in the store?
Yes, it just, sorry, it looks like a three, but it, it's a seven.
Detective Dyson, were you able to look at the logbook and, and look back to see if he was, he had frequented the store?
No, I didn't, I didn't look back. I did not look back, no.
When, when did you become aware that he had been in your store the week prior?
Well, I, I wasn't aware until Mr. Conforti told me that he recognized him and knew him and that's why he knew he was on file, but he couldn't take copies of the actual merchandise without the ink. He wanted to just, I guess, add it to the slip there, but, um,
So, so?
The stuff was confiscated before, before we did that.
So, this July twenty-ninth visit to your store where you took in that jewelry?
Yes.
When did Mr. Conforti realize that he was in the week prior?
I can't speak for him. I'm not, I'm not sure. I would-
Well, you just told me that-
I would assume it was that day that-
That day, so-
He was, he was talking with him. They were, they were, they were talking before the transaction was even completed. So, I'm not sure exactly, um, how it transpired. I wasn't there, but-
Detective Dyson, did he offer, um, any information regarding a, a visit a week prior where you had a suspect who had already, you know, brought stolen jewelry in there to give you the opportunity to check if this jewelry was in fact stolen?
He, he did, he did tell me that, um, he's been in there numerous times. And I did ask to see one of the other transactions, but he couldn't provide one for me. And they told me he's been in there numerous times and this is only one slip.
Uh, just say, I guess because he's been in numerous times, I mean, he could be inquiring about many things, came in with somebody else. Um, I'm not sure. It's the first time I, I've seen him, but, um, you know, jewelry comes in that's not real all the time. We check it and the transactions are never made. Um, he could have been in a handful of times.
So, just, so you're aware, um, every time someone comes in, you're supposed to take their photo ID, not what's on record? You're supposed to, you're asked, you're supposed to ask them for a photo ID with every transaction and you're supposed to log it in your logbook?
Yes, no, I understand that. There was no, there was no transaction when, um, he came in a few other times. He, he came in, uh, he possibly could have came with somebody else or, like I said, he could have had a fake piece of jewelry that, um, we looked at and determined it was not real. So, we, we didn't make any transaction. We just handed back the merchandise.
So, in, I'm getting right to you. One more question, Bob, I'm sorry. In, in the case that you, um, your printer runs out of toner, what have your employees been instructed to do?
They're supposed to let me know as soon as it's low, but it's, it's my job though. I'm there plenty of times to make sure that-
In, in relation to accepting a transaction?
Well, they're, they're not supposed to, I mean, if, if the ink is out, they're not, they're not supposed to do it. I've made that plenty clear to all my employees that it's not supposed to happen. Um, and I'll make sure definitely from now on, the, the ink's never gonna be an issue ever again 'cause, I mean, this is, um, you know, this has been just, and I feel, you know, like I said, I feel really bad about everything that's happened. And, you know, I'll make sure, do whatever I can to make sure it never happen again.
At, at the very least, your, your employee, um, if they were unable to take a, a, um, copy of the ID, could have at the very least looked at the ID, written down all the information that would be on that ID and at least have a record of that if the Auburn Police, I, and I'm, it still doesn't meet the requirements of your license, but it certainly would, would have shown some effort.
I agree.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes, Detective Mills, you stated initially that there were two bracelets and two pair of earrings. And the following day, you're saying that they recovered or had two bracelets and, and they, and an earring?
Uh, what was recovered, um, was two bracelets, a ring, and one earring.
Where'd the ring come from?
Was it, was identified as your ring too? Um, these, these people who, who, a lot of these people who, uh, commit these crimes, they, they're under the influence, you know, and, um, that could have been the case. I, I don't, I don't know. He could have have, um, I've checked the other pawn shops, um, uh, the, the other facilities that take in jewelry and, uh, he, he, he hasn't been, he hasn't visited those sites. There is a good chance he could have gone to another one in another town and, um, sold the jewelry there, yeah.
Well, let me get back to, make it clear. There were two bracelets and two pair of earrings.
Yes.
Now, you're saying the next day, there were two bracelets, a pair of earrings, and a ring?
According to Detective Hoover, when he, when he, when he was interviewing him, uh, the suspect told him that he sold two bracelets and two pairs of earrings. And, uh, when they brought the merchandise back, there were two bracelets, one ring, and one earring.
Did you bring back any other jewelry from that day or was it just from this sale?
It was just from that sale. That was everything that the, uh, the gentleman had sold to us that day.
And you didn't take in any other jewelry that day that would have gone to that safety deposit box?
We did take in other, but we, we bag it up and we mark, uh, we, we zip it up and we mark it. So, it, there's no way it would get confused.
Mr. Simonian?
So, who's, who's responsible for moving the jewelry from your store to the safety deposit box?
Me, me only.
All right. So, I guess maybe either I missed something or I'm, I'm, I'm kinda struggling with the timeline here because you said you weren't sure what time it was when you found out that this had transpired, when you talked to Mr. Conforti. So, you weren't sure if it was late in the day and, and that's why he and Detective Dyson agreed to bring it in the next morning. But at some point, you were physically there, took this and, and, and transported it to the safety deposit box.
Yes, I, oh, God.
And, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I, yes, I, I had to, I went, like, the receipt says I went to pick up the ink, uh, on Monday. That it had, that sales transpired on Monday morning. I showed up probably right around one o'clock Monday afternoon with the ink and then-
I'm, I'm just, you, you took, you took the jewelry that Mr. Conforti bought and, and brought it to the safety deposit box?
Yes, that Monday.
You were the one who brought it back the next morning?
No, no, I'm sorry. Uh, what happened was is on Monday, we bought, we purchased the, the jewelry.
Okay.
I, Monday after, early, early Monday afternoon, I brought the ink so we could have ink back in the printer. I grabbed all the, the stuff he had purchased that morning up until then. And when I left the store, I brought it right to my safety deposit box. Uh, Detective Dyson did not come in inquiring about the merchandise until sometime on Tuesday, which was where the timeline, I wasn't sure when I got the phone call, um, about when to bring the stuff. And, and I had brought it in that Wednesday morning, the following morning.
All right. It, it was the next morning after you found out?
Right, yes.
So, this is where, this, this is where I, you know, I, I see the problem in considering the fact that you're, this is your business and, and you've done this for a while, that you could certainly understand that because no record was taken and this is fairly expensive jewelry, um, you know, by the standards of anything I've seen before this board before. Um, and, and you have two different stories. I sold this to them and this is all that was recovered.
If I could, uh, comment on that?
Please.
Um, we also have to remember that we're dealing with a person who, uh, either stole jewelry or, uh, took it from the thief.
Totally understand. Uh, he's not getting a free pass either as far as I'm, I mean, I, I understand that. It's just the fact that all, you know, that this, this changed hands, there was no record, it, it was moved to another, I mean, it just introduces so many variables that if what the license says was done, all those variables go out of the equation and there's just pretty much black and white, either we have it or we don't, and this is what we bought and this is what we didn't.
Right.
That's, that's where I have, have a bit of a problem is, you know, at the end of the day, there's somebody who, and I'm not sure if it's this gentleman here, um, but there is somebody who's missing something that they purchased for a considerable amount of money. For whatever reason, they don't have it anymore.
I understand that.
And, and, and that's an impact to someone else, which- And, and, and that's an impact to someone else, which is the reason why the policy we have is so strict as far as keeping the logs and, and taking the photos and, and having the records. And, and I know you understand that, I'm just, it, it's just-
And, and I'm, I'm not, uh, my comment doesn't contradict what you're saying, I agree with everything you said, but we do have a couple of fa, one factor here, you're dealing with somebody of very ill repute. Now, even if my client had taken a picture of everything that he took in, that documents what he took in, and, and of course, that protects him as well, and I'm, I'm sure that he wishes that Frank Conforti had taken a picture, or that he was faster with the toner. But, that still doesn't eliminate the issue of whether there was one earring or two earrings, because, uh, if they, uh, this person might have pawned something somewhere else, he might have dropped it, he might have brought in one, and that's would have been what we had on the picture. So, you know, I'm not saying that happened, but, and, and there are what ifs.
I understand.
But no system, even the system that you require is perfect, because we don't know what happened before it got to us.
Everything you're saying, I, I don't disagree with, and I'm also taking into account the comment that Detective Dyson made, that a lot of times these folks are, are under the influence, so they're certainly, you know, could account for the difference. I'm, I'm just trying to stress that if, if what we have here had been followed, nothing's perfect, I, I agree, but it's, it's as close as we could get to protecting you and protecting people who are robbed and have someone come to your place and try to, you know, con you or con one of your sales associates, whatever, whatever the case may be, whatever's going on, the fact is, somebody is, somebody lost something that they paid for, may have been given, whatever the reason they bought it, they don't have it anymore. They're out that, they're out what they paid for, and, and, and that's the part that, you know, really bothers me. I can't sit here and, and, you know, we play the what-if game, second guess, you know, was there shady stuff going on, was it done on purpose? I, I really don't know, I, I can just listen to the testimony, um, that was given here, your response, sorry, and, and, and make a decision on that. But I'm just trying to stress that going forward, every single time, benefits you, benefits everyone involved.
I agree a hundred percent. I think my client agrees a hundred percent as well.
I'm just saying, that this business is a reflection of me and everything that I'm, that I stand for, and I definitely don't stand or tolerate any type of, you know, stolen material coming in, or, or trying to not do what is required by the license, you know what I mean? And I definitely feel really bad about it, and, like I said, I, I said we worked, we worked with the detective on this case and on other cases, and we have helped, you know, you know, families and get their, get their items back, that we did, even like in this case, you know, they were able to get all their items back with, without a problem. And, you know, like I said, I feel really bad about it, and that's all I can really say.
I think the board has some more questions, but Detective Dyson wanted to be heard on something?
Uh, just, just one issue. He, he told me that, um, when, when I picked up the stolen property, I found that there was actually two transactions. Uh, the suspect went there in the morning, and then went there later in the afternoon. There was one transaction for two hundred and a second transaction for four hundred and eighty. If, if, if that was the case, then Mr. Conforti should have gave me two separate bags. He gave me one bag with just this jewelry.
Yes, that was, uh, when I had, went to the safety deposit box to grab the actual materials, um, I didn't want, I didn't want to lose them, so I, I knew that was all for the one case, and I did put them on, in a bag, and I wrote hold on them, so it, it wouldn't get missing, so when you, when you had got the, um, the items that-
Yeah, but they should have already been prepackaged, right?
They, they were. I, I, I took them out, 'cause I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna-
Took them out, you put them only in one bag?
Put them in one bag and wrote hold on them, so they wouldn't get lost.
So, um, we have many more questions. Uh, Mr. Grossman, then Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes, uh-
You need to move up to your microphone.
Mr. O'Brien, uh, painted us a picture earlier of your background, and said that you have a mother that has some problems, and you stated that you work at the store fifteen to twenty hours a week, and that you're single. So you must have some other form of income, and this is a, a side business for you?
No, it's not a side business, it's my, uh, main source of income. Um, you know, yes, I do, I do work part-time, 'cause my, my mom is disabled, um, I do help her out with her shopping and, and things that she needs to get done during the week as well. Um, you know, I have, fortunately enough, like I said, I am a single person, I don't have a, I don't have like many, many bills, so on the money that I am making at the store, um, I'm also allowed to employ Mr. Conforti and Mr. Rulonis, um, to also help them, uh, you know, make a, make a paycheck as well, and, I'm, I mean, I'm not getting rich or anything, but that's, that's what I, uh, that's what I'm in, okay.
Mrs. Brotherton?
I, Mr. Bishai, I, I believe my first question to you would be, what type of background do you have, sir, as far as, um, I'm not even sure what it's called, looking at gems?
Appraising.
Or experience?
Appraising the-
Appraising.
Well, basically, um, my best friend, uh, his father, um, has a business, and I spent a lot of time, uh, at that business. I also made, made many trips with them to New York City, where they go and melt all the gold, um, just a lot of picking their brain and learning. Um, I have no knowledge on any gems or diamonds, I'm not a gemologist. Um, if, if stones or any type of like that do come in, we do not offer anything extra for that, it just comes with the gold, it comes with the gold. If they ask us to remove any of the stones and they want them back, we, we, we take, if we can take them out, we take them out, and we, um, and we give it to them. Um, but just, uh, many, uh, just a few years of just being around the business, that's how I, I learned how to, um, to run the business.
One of my concerns would be, sir, is that sometimes it's not the monetary value, or I'm sure we all have possessions that you really, as the MasterCard commercial says, that are priceless, and, and those can't be replaced.
I, I agree.
Number two, who makes the determination as to what items stay on site and which items are then transported for safer keeping?
Well, usually, um, by the end of the, the end of the night, I usually either meet up with Mr. Conforti or Mr. Rulonis, and I grab the, all the items from that, he bought from that day, and usually I either transport them that night, or the first thing the next morning, to the safety deposit box, 'cause like I said, you know, that's, that's my investment, that's my life, and I can sleep much better at night knowing that it's in a safety deposit box at the bank, um, easily accessible when, when need be.
And my concern is, you had indicated no one else has access to the safety box? No one else can drop off?
My, well, nobody does, um, my mother's on there just in case something ever happened to me, she's, um-
Okay, so there is some, okay, we needed to get that clear. Oh, my goodness, and there was another question, and I'm not quite sure what I did with that question.
We're gonna be here for a little bit, we have more questions, I'm sure it'll come to you. The chief would like to be heard, then I have some questions on, um, the training of employees. Chief?
I just have one question regarding something that you just said. You said if somebody comes in with, uh, precious gemstones or something that are part of, uh, the piece of jewelry, you offered to extract that and give that back to them?
Yes.
Did you offer to give this gentleman the diamonds that were, um, attached to the, uh, to the jewelry? Did you offer to return those to him, do you know?
I'm not even sure if Mr. Conforti did, did or did not. Um, normally, um, whoever comes in and brings their items, they're well aware before they walk in what stones are there, what stones aren't there, and we make it clear that we only, we're only there to buy the metals, not the stones, and if they request that they would like, uh, like the stones, we, you know, we'd be more than happy to, you know, to remove them if we can, things like that. But if they weren't happy with the price, or they weren't happy because we weren't offering anything for the stones, you know, they, you know, we wouldn't make the transaction.
So the, the answer is you don't know? You don't know what he did?
On that case, I, I don't know, I would assume not, though.
Thank you.
So I have, I have some questions regarding, um, the purchase of the jewelry and what your policies are. Um, so Frank and Joe are alone at the stores when, when they're there, I would assume. You said they're both part-time employees?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm in there a lot, though, as, as well, but, yes.
But you did say that they're alone?
Yes, sometimes.
So, so are they authorized to take in the jewelry? And I, I know your sign says cash for gold. Do, do people get cash in hand? They come in, they make the transaction, and you hand them cash?
Yes.
Okay. So, so what training and how is Mr. Conforti and Joe, how do they make the determination of what the value of the items brought in is?
Uh, usually, um, they, they, they're trained to check the stock market first thing in the morning, um, and then a lot of, most of the time, they call me up and just to, to, you know, find out what prices we're paying for different carats of gold, 'cause ten carat, fourteen, eighteen carat, et cetera, uh, all come with different prices. So usually, either I call them up in the morning, or they, they check, and if it hasn't changed much, they pretty much know from the previous time that they worked, um, basically what amount that they were, you know, that they need to offer for each items. Um, if anything usually changes, I'll call and let them know, um, but most of the time, I do call them in the morning, and we, we go over prices, 'cause we don't discriminate anybody who comes in. We pay everybody the, uh, the same amount for whether they have ten carat, fourteen, or eighteen, it's the same amount for, for each customer who comes in. So it's pretty easy to just write down usually the, the price for the day, that they, they know when they weigh it up, and they check what carat it is to know exactly what to offer them.
Okay. So, um, so on that day, they were authorized to purchase this jewelry for the weight of the gold?
That's correct.
So can you tell me about that? I mean, you said that, or either you or Attorney O'Brien said there was a four hundred dollar transaction and a two hundred dollar transaction, am I correct?
It was, uh, four hundred and eighty, uh, four hundred and eighty, and the second one was two hundred.
Four hundred and eighty and two hundred? I, I wanna hear the specifics about that transaction and how, how that determination was made, that it was, had a value of four hundred and eighty dollars?
Um, well, basically, I believe the, uh, the larger one, the four hundred and eighty, was the, um, the bracelet, and I do believe the, uh, that was the ring as well. Uh, those were the two heavier pieces, so obviously, um, those were more money, and then I believe the other time, they brought another bracelet in with the, uh, with the solo earring, uh, as well, which, which was less, weighed less, so, so-
Okay. So going back to the larger transaction of four hundred and eighty dollars, which was the bracelet of significant value, so I'm assuming that's the diamond bracelet?
Yes.
And the ring, was there a stone?
Uh, I believe it had a, a few smaller diamonds in it as well.
Okay. So because you only give, um, the value of the gold, and this bracelet had significant value because it had many diamonds in it, and you don't give any extra for the diamonds, how did, how did you determine what that gold was worth and what the weight was if you didn't take the diamonds out?
Well, normally, we, we just, we just weigh the whole piece the way it is and, and when we pay, 'cause the, the diamonds were not, we're not talking, um, you know, carat diamonds, so we're not talking very, very large diamonds, there were a lot of little, little ones that basically, if you did remove them out of the piece, it barely would have even affected the weight of the scale. So normally, um, we don't, we don't normally subtract off of that, you know?
So I have a, like, I, I, I hope to get an answer to this question tonight, because it will certainly make a determination of how I, um, how I speak to any penalty phase. So you took a diamond bracelet of significant value, but you say that there is, there is nothing given for that value. What, what procedure did you use that you're in business? You say, okay, gold is worth this much on this day, so we're putting it on the scale, and that bracelet weighed this much, and we gave them a four hundred and eighty dollars?
Okay, I can easily answer that for you, um-
Do you have a log or any record of that?
Of, of what, of log of what?
Of the weight of the jewelry and what you gave?
Uh, normally, it, it goes with the, um, you know, when we take the records, unfortunately, in this case, there wasn't, but just to determine, so you understand, um, the difference in value, um, you know, 'cause like I said, it states on there a lot of money for value, and I'm not disregarding that maybe that is the case, but that's up for debate how much it really was worth. But for me, how I determine how much the, the, uh, the jewelry is worth, is I go by melt value. I go by what I would get for it after melting it down. I do not resell any of the stuff, so even if the bracelet was appraised at ten thousand dollars, that doesn't mean I bought it for four hundred dollars and went and sold it for ten thousand dollars, it doesn't work that way. I do not sell anything, I melt it all down. So I go just by getting the price I know I would get melt value for, for that, not for reselling anything. So going by the weight, I pay a, a certain amount for the weight, and then once I know it gets melted, and that's when I, that's where I make my, you know, that's where I make my profit, is right there. There is no reselling it, no, no anything like that, so I don't determine, with stones or no stones, it does, it doesn't matter, 'cause it all gets melted anyways.
So what happens to the stones?
The stones usually either, 'cause when you bring it to New York, what they do is they take all the gold, they melt it, it's kind of a neat process, they melt it into a big bar. And then usually, most of the stones are made out of glass, a lot of them, and they get, they usually either disintegrate, 'cause it's at really high temperatures. Sometimes the diamonds, what they do is they, um, they get stuck within the bar, they, uh, they clean the bar once it, once they melt it into a bar, and then they just throw it in a bucket, and then they hand me my bar. Now, I always joke with my, you know, my buddy who goes with me all the time, 'cause we always say, you know, all the diamonds usually that are left in there, you know, they probably shift through them and, and probably pull them out, and they probably can sell them, um, I'm not really sure, but that's usually where they end up after it gets melted, they, um, they clean it off, and they usually take all of the waste from the bar that's not the gold, and they put it in a bucket.
Detective Dyson?
Uh, this is, is this your, what is this?
Uh, that's a, that's usually a log sheet where, um, each transaction gets jotted down, if-
This is the, uh, log sheet, uh, Mr. Conforti gave me, um, supposedly he filled this out, he gave it to me until I picked up the jewelry, but on, just from reading this, could you tell me what he, what he, uh, just from reading that, could you tell what he, what he sold?
You need to go to the microphone so you, we can hear you. And then if, if the board could just look at what you referenced, so we know what we're talking, you're referring to.
Uh, it's hard to, it's hard to really say exactly, um, what he sold, because there's nothing jotted down here except for just the amount of money that, that he paid out, 'cause it's the one way that I, um, keep track of when money's leaving the store, obviously, I need to keep track of what's going in and what's going out, and there's nothing, uh, jotted down here that's-
It tells you, it tells you what kind of metals there are, right?
Yeah, I have it here where-
What kind of metals is to say on there?
It says fourteen carat, fourteen carat, and he had checked off, uh, sterling nine two five.
Sterling silver?
Yeah.
These are the, uh-
Forty carat.
This is the, this is the stolen property that I recovered, and none of it's sterling, sterling silver, it's all gold.
So, so on the-
According to, according to this log sheet, there was also sterling silver sold that day, and I just didn't notice it until just now, but all the, all the stolen jewelry that I recovered, it's all gold. There's no, there was no sterling silver in the, in those bags.
On this, um, on this, there's, there's something scribbled out, six point eight and twenty-three, is that the weight?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, I didn't even, I didn't even see that.
Um, if I can just-
I, I think, I think it is the-
I'd like to have a copy of this for board members. Um, can we get some copies of that, please? We're, we're just gonna, um, make some copies of that, so board members can all know what we're referring to. Over by, uh, over here. Uh huh.
That, that sheet that they're taking a copy, that, that was specific to this transaction?
Uh, I believe it was, I believe that, that might have been the weight and penny weights, he might have, he may have wrote it down.
So it was a log that was created at the time or after the fact for the police?
That was, it should have been at, at, on that day, 'cause normally you're supposed to be writing, write down, on those sheets, you're supposed to write down the weights as, as well as-
So that, so that you know what they've taken in?
Right, so I can keep track of what, what came in and what went out.
Mr. Simonton?
So, on that sheet, that was part of this specific transaction of these items this gentleman brought in, you've noted something that was sterling silver, but that was not in what was returned, there was nothing that was silver that was given to Detective Dyson?
Yes, I'm aware.
So how do you account for that discrepancy?
He, he checked it off, um, honestly, you know, under oath and to truth, I don't think he, he bought anything silver, I don't know why it's, it's checked off, but all the, all the merchandise that was bought- But all the, all the merchandise that was bought, and, and we did buy from there, was, was returned, it was all there, I don't know why, I don't know where that sterling check came from. Normally, there should be a weight with it, but I'm honestly, really not sure why he had checked that.
I'll give members an opportunity to look at those pictures.
The Chair, can we have a copy of what you're saying too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So on this customer log sheet that we're all looking at now? Mr. Bishai?
I'm sorry?
On the customer log sheet that we're all looking at now, that we just, were given a copy of tonight, on the second transaction, it says four hundred and eighty dollars, and there's a twenty-three next to it, can you tell me what that twenty-three is?
Uh, I believe that's twenty-three pennyweights, that's how we weigh all the jewelry, it goes, it goes in pennyweights.
And what was included in that second transaction?
I believe it was the diamond bracelet, and that there was a ring in there as well.
Mr. Simoneon?
What, what's, what's the, what's the rest of the stuff on the bottom there? Is that, is that notations that are common to these sheets? There's a ninety-four or something, can't make it out, Rudy two hundred, and then a hyphen, and it looks like F C one nine five?
Yes, that's, that's when they take their pay. Um, Joe picked up his pay that day. Like I said, it's all, all the money that comes in gets, gets jotted, all the money that goes out gets jotted down. So if they come in and pick up their paycheck from the week before, it needs to be marked down, so I know what money goes out. And Frank and Rudy also took his pay, and that's what was jotted on the bottom of the sheet.
And it's common to do that on a, on, on the transaction sheet for what, what you're purchasing?
Well, normally, I just, uh, this is just for my records and my records, so I know, I can keep track of the money that, you know, that's going out and coming in.
All right.
So, Mrs. Brotherton?
I'm all set.
Mr. Bishai, does each, when you, it says customer log sheet, please be with me. Does each person, like, like the alleged person that came in that day, does he have a log sheet for him, or was this a daily log sheet for the, for the whole store?
It's a daily one for the whole store.
So those were the only two transactions on the fifth of August?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just want to be clear, the first transaction was from, um, I don't, I don't want to use his name, the person who confessed to stealing the jewelry. He was in in the morning? And then he came back in the afternoon? So he had two transactions, two hundred dollars and four hundred and eighty dollars?
That's correct.
And this is the first time it happened, but it happened twice that day? That we didn't take any records?
Well, like I said, I, as, you know, Mr. Conforty definitely, like I said, he made, he made a mistake, like I said, um, like I said, we did have him on file, and I guess his, his thought of it, which is, like I said, not right, and not what should have been done, was we wanted to take the items that he sold, and we were gonna add it to his slip, because we had a slip in there. So, um, I'm not really sure how it transpired in the afternoon, when he did come in, um, but I believe after speaking with Mr. Conforty, after finding out who the gentleman was and everything else, I guess that, that was his main thought, was we were gonna just add it to his records that we already had on file.
Do you ever ask questions, like when someone comes in, is, is this your jewelry?
Yes, we do.
And he's, and so I assume he indicated it was?
I'm sure he did. Frank's usually pretty good on that, because...
And, and so he was in in the morning, and you said, is this your jewelry? And then he showed up later with a woman's diamond bracelet?
Yes.
And...
I, I believe, I mean, I can't, I can't stereotype every customer that comes in the store, I would never be, I wouldn't be in business. However, you know, they do understand when they're coming in, that they need to, you know, be responsible for the things that they do bring in. We do sometimes, if it seems a little fishy, you know, we do, you know, mention something like, you know, is this, you know, you know, stuff yours? And they always, you know, they always seem to just, you know, say, yeah, yeah, no, you know, it's, it's mine, and I mean, I can't, you know, I don't know for a fact to determine whether it's stolen or not stolen, I just can just, you know, just take them for what they're worth, because they'd never give me a reason not to, so...
So this is hopefully my last question. There were no red flags when he showed up with some jewelry in the morning, and phew, that transaction went pretty easy, nobody asked me for anything, and then he showed up a few hours later with some more jewelry? I would think if, you know, I went through my jewelry in the morning, and I said, you know what, it breaks my heart to sell my wife's diamond tennis bracelet, but this is what we have to do for the family, to pay the bills, and you, you make that decision, and you're gonna take all your jewelry to the gold shop and get some money for it, not like, oh, well, you know, I'm gonna take these two pieces in, and then that was easy, let's go get some more, just, it just, it, I'm really troubled by the operation of your business, and I'm, and I'm even more troubled that a salesman, if that's what they're called, an associate, knowing the facts of the case, and knowing that he lied to the Auburn Police Detectives, there were obviously victims involved, that you're leaving them in your store alone still?
No, I, and I do understand that, um, like I said, Mr. Conforty...
As a licensing authority, I'm just letting you know that that troubles me.
Okay.
Is, are there any other questions? Is there anyone else who wanted to say anything? If you could come up, and if you guys could just step over a second? And all the questions and comments go through the Chair, and if you could identify yourself for the record, please. You have been sworn.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Bob Miller, Robert Miller, Robert J. Miller. I happen to sit on the other side of the desk on Monday nights on Webster Board. Been there for four terms. However, I've been in business for thirty-five years, and doing the work that I do for forty-two years. And that jewelry was some presence to my wife that I got, because I think she's a lovely lady, and she still is. And she works very hard. She works roughly ten to twelve hours a day at Hubbard Hospital, where she happens to work, as an administrator. But the idea of it is, we've saved and worked like animals to get some of this stuff, which is not for just our own enjoyment, but for the kids, the grandchildren, the silver, there's other things. I can't say, because we don't know at this point, with this person, that I happen to trust on his word. You know, I've, I've learned on this, there's nothing worse than getting ripped off because you've trusted somebody, and it's unfortunate, and I hope none of you ever have to go through this, because it's a harrowing experience, and I'll just pertain to this particular instance. I happen to have a license in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for what I do, and a town license on three different towns. You have to do this. And if you screw up as the person being licensed, and you have underlings underneath you, guess what? You're responsible. You are, not the person underneath you, to pay the penalty. On my state licenses, you go before the Board of Registration, and you have a good possibility that you'd lose your licenses and be totally out of business. I can, I can kind of sympathize with the mother thing and, and everything else. I work roughly ninety hours a week, and then some. I'm sixty-two years old, so I'm old, okay? And I know about you a little bit, but be that as it may. We'll let it go at that. But the idea of it is, there was one bracelet that was not my wife's. And if you knew my wife, and she's, like I say, she's lovely, she does not buy junk. Trust me, I know. And, and when you get cards from the Bahamas that says happy wife, happy life, then you know there's some, out of Saint Thomas, you know there's a, she, she doesn't get junk. You just get a little bit cheaper there. We have some of the receipts, but we have to keep going through all of this stuff, because we have to prove this. There's a court date on this particular individual, seven twenty-four, I'm sorry, nine twenty-four of this year, which we have to go, I might change that into Superior Court because of the amount, will pertain just of course to this, I understand that, Madam Chair, and all the rest of the board members, and the Administrator, and Chief, and Detective, and everyone here. I, I, I'm just so distraught over this, and my wife is totally at pieces, because when this person allegedly took these things, and they were collector coins for my granddaughter, who was sleeping five feet away, that disturbs me almost even worse than taking the items, and listening to my wife the past few weeks, because I'm also talking August first, second, and fifth. There was three different occasions where things were missing. So it's, I think it's a lot more than the alleged six hundred and eighty bucks. Uh, one of the rings, the ring, one of the stones was out, okay, fine. One of the bracelets was hers, but the other bracelet was not hers, and then there was a piece of one earring. My wife doesn't buy junky earrings, trust me. They're the size of my vehicle. But the, because she likes her bling, so be that as it may, and I'll, I'll let it go at that. Thank you for the opportunity.
If you could just wait for me, the Chief has one question.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Miller, could you just tell the, the members of the Board the total value of the loss that we're, you're talking about?
All told, all told, it was estimated at somewhere around sixty thousand dollars. And I'm not exactly positive, I could be plus or minus on that, give or take a few dollars. It's things that my wife sent, my, my wife is from Poland, we both had been married before, she was sending coins and monies over to her daughters, who, when they came back over here, had that. There were things for my granddaughter, collector coins that my wife bought, et cetera, et cetera. It just goes on and on, and it almost sickens me to do this. And as a licensing agent in the other town that I happen to be in, it, it's, we all have to live by rules regardless, and I'm sorry, at this point, just doesn't impress me too much, if you're working twenty or twenty-five hours a week. But that's only my personal opinion. Somebody's gotta watch the shop.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Detective Dyson, just for housekeeping, one of the conditions on the licenses, all scales and measurement devices shall be inspected and sealed by the Town of Auburn, seal of weights and measures. Do you know, can you answer that? Do you know if they have a scale on site that's been...
They do have a scale on site, but I'm not sure if it's...
Are you able to tell me if it was, um...
Yes, I have, I have...
Inspected by the town?
Yep, he comes every year, I have a copy of, in my back room at the store, stating that, and he puts a little sticker on the, underneath the scale, stating that it's been, he's been checked in, it's accurate.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else to say, before we close the hearing? Attorney O'Brien?
I just want to thank you guys for hearing this, and like I said, I feel really bad about what happened here, and I'm just very happy that he had, you know, was able to get most of, you know, some of the stuff back, and I hope that he, you know, his family gets the rest of the stuff back, wherever it went. Like I said, this is my livelihood, and I don't want to be known as somebody who, you know, it's a place to go to just sell your stolen material, you know, this is my life, my livelihood, I have people who depend on me, and, and I'll make sure that, like I said, steps have been taken, that this will never happen again, and I will never come in front of you again in, in this type of situation, and I can assure you that. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have anything additional from the Auburn Police Department?
No.
No? Before the Board deliberates, we need to close the hearing?
We shouldn't have closed the hearing, second?
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye. Madam Chairman?
Excuse me, before we vote to close the hearing?
Yes. So exactly what infraction are you deliberating on? Have you noticed, um...
So, so, so the, so the Board is going to close the hearing, and then make the determination as to, um, a finding, as whether they did violate their license, the conditions of the license before us. We have conditions that we will discuss, but there are, on, on this, on his license, there are four conditions. So we will discuss any and all of the conditions he, the license holder may have violated.
So...
So...
Is the logbook, license plate, et cetera, so it's...
So the logbook, the complying with all state laws pertaining to record keeping?
Scales.
And we've just determined that the scales, I would like to, you know, have something submitted to the Board showing that they were inspected, but for now, I'm gonna take his word that they have been inspected. And then, um, the records must be kept on site for sixty days. And, you know, I look at that as two different issues. The gold must be kept on site for sixty days, and the records must be kept on site for sixty days. So that's what we'll be deliberating on.
Just, as a comment before you start to deliberate, I would ask you to consider that, uh, the most important condition of the license, he kept, because he kept the jewelry safe, so it could be recovered by Detective Dyson. And secondly, uh, that although he did not have a copy of the gentleman's license then, as far as institutional memory as it goes, he knew, after he talked to his people, who he was dealing with. I don't think Mr. Conforty did very well when he talked to Detective Dyson, and we make no excuse for that. But nonetheless, we were, they were able to know who took, or who brought in the, the goods, after they were able to put their heads together and, and look at things. I just request the Board to consider those factors as well. And thank you all for your hearing tonight, you've been very patient, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
So before, says a motion to close the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So, so now the Board can discuss and consider any action that the... Mr. Simoneon?
Please, I'm just...
That's just to let you, me know you want to say something?
Aye.
All right. So in your packet is a policy for a junk license violation that this Board adopted on January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. The recommended penalties, first violation, a one-day suspension, second violation, two-day minimum with up to a five-day suspension. The third violation is license revocation. The Board of Selectmen may vote to revoke the license at any time if they deem it is appropriate based on the level or seriousness of the violation per section seven of the Secondhand Dealers in Pawn Shops policy. The Licensing Authority, the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with match General Law, Chapter one forty, Section fifty-four, and further subject to subsections two oh two through two oh five of General Law, Chapter one forty inclusive, may suspend, revoke, or modify any license when it has reasonable cause to believe the license has violated the term conditions or regulations pertaining to such license. So I will open it up to discussion before we, um, discuss the penalty. Mr. Simoneon?
Oh, well, I guess I'll, I, I really, after an hour and a half, I, I think personally, I've heard, listened to both sides, heard all the discussion. I was gonna recommend penalty, but if we want to have more discussion first, but...
Certainly, you can recommend a penalty, make a motion, and if it's seconded, then we'll have discussion.
Then I, I would make the motion for a three-day suspension of the license.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
We're in the discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Simoneon speaks first, because he made the motion.
So after, after listening to both sides for considerable amount of time and taking in everything that was said, I, I mean, there's been sympathetic testimony on both sides, that, that aside, the reason that I'm suggesting three days is this. Detective Dyson read us what the alleged violation was, and the comment from Mr. O'Brien was that there was no dispute, that there was a violation. So under the recommended penalties, for a first violation, one-day suspension. So right there, neither side disagreed that the violation, so, so that's the first day. The second day that I'm recommending is, you take into account all of the, you know, Mr. Conforty, seventy-two years old, he was confused, he was nervous, but he told three specific lies. He, 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 there were three things that he wasn't honest about. If you're nervous, and, I mean, I know people... If you're nervous, a, and, I mean, I know people have been, not, not just being questioned by the police, but being questioned by someone in a position of authority, um, you say something, you go, well, hang on a second, that's not entirely true, let me, let me, but he just continued down that road. So that, as has been said here by several people, bothers me, so that's my second day. And the third day, because I think, outside of the loss to someone, that, that really bothers me is, both you and Mr. O'Brien stood up here and testified to this board how important this business was to you. I mean, you gave us specific examples of why it is so inherently important in your life, it is a huge part, it is your entire income, and I, I listened to each and every one of those things that you said, and almost every question that was asked after that, I don't know, I'm not sure, I can't answer that, I don't know what Mr. Conforti was thinking. So, if I had, if that was my sole means of income, and I had that much invested in it, I, I would, I think I would invest a lot more time in being there, or at least making sure that those two employees knew the impact to me, and there would be no ifs, ands, or buts. If, if you take away my livelihood, you're gone. Um, we're different people, I'm not gonna hold you to the standards, I, I would, but, but that is my reason for the third day. You, you said how important it was to you, and yet, there were so many I don't knows, and I'm not sure, and I guess, and to me, that doesn't speak to your testimony, that this is your lifeblood, this is so important to me, there's a lot of second guessing. So that's my recommendation, and that's up to the board to deliberate, the motion or not, but that's my reason for recommending three days.
I'm gonna, um, jump in here before I recognize other members, um, and just say that I, um, could not support simply a three-day suspension. I think that when we looked at this, um, junk policy license, it, um, the license holder has completely violated the spirit of the license. The, um, we put these into place to prevent exactly what happened, the purchase of stolen jewelry. This, your, your, um, the conditions on your license, I'm going to look at separately, and, and with your own testimony, you said that it happened twice, in the morning and the afternoon, those are two different, two different times that you did it, and four different violations, the logbooks, the complying with state law, keeping the gold on site, and keeping the records on site. When we put together this recommended penalties, we intentionally included the section that the Board of Selectmen may vote, vote to revoke the license at any time if they deem it appropriate based on the level of seriousness of the violation. I know under discussion, when we discussed a first violation, we, we meant it to be, you know, the, the copier ran out of toner, we went to get the toner, we didn't take a copy of the license, but at least my associate wrote down the person's name, address, license number, et cetera. That's what we look at. That's, that, that's considered a, a minor violation. Um, we've had, um, first, second, third violations, times three or four, and I would ask the board to consider a long-term suspension. Mr. Grossman, you're next.
Yes, uh, due to the seriousness of, of the, uh, action taken by, by the business, I was going to suggest five days' suspension, in that he made Mr. Miller whole, he got his merchandise, and we were told he got his merchandise back.
He did not. Mr. Miller has not received a significant amount of his merchandise back.
No, the merchandise that was sold to the, is the store.
Well, I, I-
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt here, because we've closed the hearing, we can't take any more testimony, Mr. Grossman, that, if, if, if a board member can help clarify a question that you may have, but we can't take any additional testimony once the hearing's been closed, I think it was clear that, that it was admitted that this board won't know what was brought in that day because there was no record of it.
Okay, based on, based on what's been said-
I'm sorry, Chief, we-
I understand.
Having to be able to add anymore, it would be my feeling that the suspension be five days and not three.
So I'll just go back to, um, his violation of not keeping records, um, or the gold, um, on site for 60 days, that is what I had in mind for a long-term suspension. Mr. Holstrom, then Mrs. Brotherton.
I've been here pretty quiet tonight, just taking this all in and listening to all the evidence coming towards us, and, uh, frankly, I'm a little disheartened with the operation of this company. Um, some of the things we've seen here tonight, this customer log sheet, well, I would think that if anybody walking into my business needed to do an audit or have to understand exactly what I do in my business, I, a customer log sheet and just some basic numbers on it just really doesn't do it for me. Um, it sounds like it's a daily log sheet and not an individual log sheet, and I think that goes against the, uh, policy itself, that, uh, we want to know, we're, we're asking for licenses, we're asking for license numbers, we're looking for pictures, for license plates, we're looking for all this information, we're not getting it, and I get a custom log sheet that really doesn't tell me anything about what they've done for the day, and what the real values are of this. Um, I think it's time for this company to step back, and the owner himself, being as concerned as he is for the business that he's in, is to step back and take a good look at your operation, fine tune the paperwork and your record-keeping, and then again, go back to your employees and say, hey, look, this is what it is. Um, I think you violated the policy significantly tonight, and I think it's time to step back and, um, really take it to task and, uh, correct your operation before we put you back in operation.
Mrs. Brotherton?
I, I agree on the revocation of a license. Um, I feel as though your license was truly violated, uh, like I said, it isn't always monetary. Unfortunately, with today, today's economy, people are stealing things, and I think if we don't set a precedence right now in our town to help stop this, I agree that your wholeheartedness as a job, sir, 15 to 20 hours a week, not having real clear cuts of who's making these determinations as far as going, what gets, what property gets left on site, what property gets moved to a safe deposit box, I feel as though that there were a lot of answers that you gave to questions tonight that, um, actually gave us more questions versus answers, and I agree with the revocation of a license.
So I, um, so the motion on, on the table right now is for a three-day suspension. I, I, as I stated, I'm not gonna support a three-day suspension, but I still, I also feel that, um, revocation is extreme, I, I would, um, there's no other motion on the table right now, we're gonna vote on that, but certainly, um, if, if this motion fails, and I would addition, still be looking for a long-term suspension, be willing to, um, to look at a less, uh, time suspension, maybe even 30 days, if, if the license holder was willing to agree to be at the shop a minimum of 40 hours a week. Um, if not, I couldn't support anything, anything, um, less than a 60-day suspension. Is there, Mr. Simoneon, on your motion for a three-day suspension?
Yeah, um, I realize that all of the conditions on the license were violated, but it was also stated that in the past, he has been cooperative. I, I just think in, in, in trying to, trying to be fair, and, and we have certainly given, uh, I, I know for a fact, within the last year, um, where a business was the sole source of income for someone who violated their liquor license, we took that into consideration. Um, this is the, this is the first time he's come before us, we can speculate that, you know, because of the nature, uh, and, and I agree, it's egregious, we can, we can speculate that because of the nature of the violation, maybe other things have gone on, and, and maybe he just hasn't been caught, but I mean, you could say that about pretty much any individual or any business, and, and believe me, I, I'm, I've taken into account the impact to Mr. Miller and his family, but I think outrageous punishment doesn't make sense. And a three-day suspension, I think sends a message, because I don't think there's any question in anyone's mind here from the comments that have been made, that if you come back here again for this, it, it won't be a suspension. So, in the spirit of trying to be fair, but trying to send the message, and trying to make sure that this doesn't happen again, I think that, you know, there has to be some accounting for all of those factors, a, and at the same time, letting the punishment fit the crime for, to be cliche, which I hate to do, but, um, you know, and, and that's why I believe that a three-day suspension in this case is, sends that message, um, and, and makes it clear from the comments that a second time is, there, there won't be a second, the second time will, will certainly be a loss of license. So, that's my thought.
And I'll just say that I, um, I feel that this is a serious violation, and if we have a, a license holder before us who, again, I'll use my example of just not taking a photo ID, um, a photocopy of an ID, and, and the first violation is a one-day suspension, I certainly don't feel that a one-day suspension for not taking a photocopy, simply not taking a photocopy of an ID because it's part of your, your, your conditions of your license, we suspend them for one day, as yet someone with serious violations like this, we only suspend for three days. Um, again, I'm still troubled by the testimony of the, um, of the license holder, and I don't think that he took it serious. Is there any more comment on the motion? Mr. Simoneon? I'm sorry, the hearing's closed.
I don't, I don't have any more evidence, but I would ask to have a comment.
Mr. Simoneon?
I do, I do take this seriously, I, I, I do believe that it is a serious violation. Um, I just don't, I, I just don't think you go nuclear on the first pass, I, I, I think there has to be some, you know, some fairness, um, in, to, to both sides, and I, and I, I sat here just like everyone else and listened to Mr. Miller's testimony, and it's heart-wrenching, and I would not want my family to be in that position in any way, shape, or form. But I just think send, sending this kind of message, when we have, as I said in the past, given, you know, this is your sole source of income, so we're not gonna go quite as hard to someone who violated a liquor license, to me, that's just as bad, you're selling alcohol to minors, and I know that's not part of this case, but we have kind of set that precedent, so I, I just think going over, over the edge the other way doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, and, and that's it.
I'm sorry, I didn't let the chief speak, and I, I just don't think it's appropriate if I let you speak.
Well, it's a lot like a, uh, closing argument, if you will.
But I gave you that opportunity before I closed the hearing.
I'm not, I think to say any, to give you any more facts, you have all the facts. But I think that it's reasonable to give me a chance to suggest some thoughts before penalty.
What is, um, what is, what is the, what is the-
The procedure is we close the hearing, I gave the Attorney O'Brien an opportunity to make a closing statement, the procedure is to close the hearing, and the board would discuss the facts presented, deliberate over the issues, and if appropriate, make a finding of a violation or statute by law or regulation, the findings should be specific to time, dates, and persons, and then we make a penalty.
I, I support the chair on this one.
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien, we just, we have to be consistent with our-
I understand, but I think there's just one thing, that, um, this is basically one incident, several violations, but it's one incident.
Thank you. Mr. Simoneon?
I, I've ta, I've taken that into account, and that, and that was one of the things that I said, I, I understand there were several violations, and, and every single condition of the license was violated, absolutely. In fact, and I also took into account the fact that they said, the Auburn Police Department said, you've cooperated in the past, and I could go the other way and say that I'm really as put off as, as the chair is by the actions that were taken, so I'm trying to find some middle ground, that's, that's where I'm at.
So I'll just point out, and I don't know, Mr. Attorney O'Brien, if you have a copy of the policy on the, the violations, but it's recommended policies, it's not clear, you know, it's, it's not exact, it's not, okay, on the first violation, you shall have this, and section D says, the Board of Selectmen, I'll just read it again, the Board of Selectmen may vote to revoke the license at any time if they deem it appropriate based on the level of seriousness of the violation per section seven of the secondhand dealers in pawn shop policy. And I'll just, again, you know, for the purpose of this motion, there's certainly no way I could support three days, Mr. Grossman has mentioned five days, I've men, mentioned a long-term suspension, um, Selectman Brotherton has mentioned revocation, so I'm gonna call for the vote on this one. Mr. Simoneon, last comment on this one.
As the, as the person who made the motion, I'm, I'm actually gonna amend the motion, because considering Mr. Grossman's comments and some of the comments of the board, you know, I, I guess, five days is one, one week, so I'm, I'm gonna amend my motion to a five-day suspension.
Who seconded that motion, Sharon?
I did, and I will go along with that. I'll second that.
So, so the motion, so the motion has been amended to a, a five-day suspension, so we can now discuss a five-day suspension, I think we're, we've been pretty clear on, on members' positions, again, um, I, I can't support a five-day suspension, I'd like to see at least 30 days, and I guarantee that the license holder is gonna be on site. Does anyone want to comment on the five-day suspension? Mr. Grossman?
Just, just, I, I think he's gotten the message, he knows the seriousness, uh, even more so now than he did before when he said, yes, I understand when I got my license, uh, and in being closed for, closed down for five days, he'll take it serious, and hopefully we won't see him back here again.
So, um, Mr. Simoneon, on your motion, if you could include the specifics of what your finding is, you, you make a motion to suspend the license for five days based on a violation of the license, and if you could provide what you're basing your motion on, the date and the, um, specific of the violation, because that has to be included.
As far as the reason-
The date, the date the violation occurred, and, um-
So-
The times, which is not, and the names of the persons involved.
Okay, so, motion to suspend the license for five days.
Based on a finding that the-
Based on the finding that Mr. Bishai violated all the, all the conditions of his license on 7/29/2013?
That's not the date before the board, it's eight-five.
Eight-five, uh, August 5th, 2013.
And who violated the, that would be Mr., the 72-year-old gentleman.
And-
The, the, the man who took in the jewelry, which needs to be part of the motion.
Oh, including Mr. Conforti?
Yeah.
I, I forgot the source.
And you find that Mr. Conforti is the one that, that violated the license?
Yeah, Mr. Conforti is the, is the one that violated the license.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the five days? I'm gonna call the roll.
Oh, do we have to include the days of the suspension in the motion, or is that after the fact?
Do we have to include the days of the suspension in the motion, or is that after the fact?
It's a very long motion. You want a second motion for the, yeah, let's, um, let's see where the motion stands, and then we'll, we'll look at a calendar. Is there any more discussion on the five-day suspension? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
Mr. Simontian?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. So, um, you've been found to violate your license, the conditions of your license, and your license has been suspended for five days. Is there is there a time for that suspension, Mr. Simontian, on your motion? It's Mr. Simontian's motion.
Next week is a holiday. I would recommend the Monday through Friday of the following week, which I believe would be September 6th.
I believe the 9th.
No, the 9th. Wait. I don't know, somebody have a...
And so, so it's all weekdays, Monday through Friday, the week of September 9th? Is that your?
Sure. From September 9th through September 13th.
And the, um, as a general practice, the, the purpose for the store being closed is posted on the door for violations of their license. So is there a second on the, um, five-day suspension for September 9th or September 15th?
Second.
Thirteenth, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
No.
Mr. Simontian?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
The chair votes no. And I think that's all the business we need to take on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief, thank you Detective for coming in. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for waiting. The next item on our agenda is Board of Selectmen items, a discussion on the Bay Path assessment, and we have representatives from Bay Path. You're welcome to come up here. Good evening, and thank you for waiting. I, I, I appreciate your waiting. It's now nine o'clock. So, there was some...
How you doing?
So, just so, just so you have some background, we, we were in receipt of your letter regarding, the town's assessment, and some members had some questions on that. So I'm going to give you an opportunity to discuss the assessment, Auburn's revised assessment for fiscal year 2014.
Great, and thank you.
And if you could just give your name for the record, thanks.
My name is John LaFlesh. I'm the superintendent of schools. We have a couple of documents going around. To my right is Dean Yakabuchi, the business manager. And in our audience are Mr. Erickson and Mr. Heroyan, who are the members of the Bay Path School Committee from Auburn. And we're pleased to be with you this evening to discuss the change in the assessment. And we'll look first at the color, colored presentation of PowerPoint. Obviously, it's a little later than we expected to start, and certainly what we're going to do is give you a brief overview and answer any and all questions you, you may have. But if we look at the second page of that PowerPoint, the comparison of the governor's budget and final state budget, just as a, uh, overview of how our budgets are set and assessments are set to the town, as you may recall, we set our budgets back in, during the wintertime in January and February. And in fact, by February 15th of every year, we send to the boards of selectmen not only our proposed budget, but also the proposed assessments for each town. By March 15th, no later, the school committee holds a public hearing and adopts the budget. Of course, when we do our budgets at that time, just like the towns that we represent, you're working off of information that isn't fully approved. So this year, our budget was based on the governor's release. And as you know, the governor's budget ended up not being the budget that was adopted by the legislature. The, the governor's budget had an additional $1.5 billion in taxes to balance his budget. And come first week of July, when the budget was finally adopted by the legislature, that had gone down to about $500 million, and there were a number of changes, including the formula, the Chapter 70 formula. Bay Path has been, for the last fourteen years, assessing the minimum assessment required by law. And so the assessments that go out to the towns reflect the minimum required by Chapter 70. And so when that minimum changes, the, the assessments change. This year, the assessment changed for all of our towns. Sometimes that's not the case. I would say sixty percent of the time, the, the budget that's released in, in January is actually the low water mark, and the legislature has been adding funds. Forty percent of the time, just the reverse. So, uh, in this year's budget, what we saw happen was that when the formula changed, seven of our communities saw their assessments go down, and three of the communities saw their assessments go up. Namely Paxton, Southbridge, and Auburn, their assessments have gone up. Having said all that, if we turn to, um, page three, when you look at the Bay Path budget in the whole, our Chapter 70 money from the state decreased $159,371. Our Chapter 71 busing aid increased by $116,000. And when you look at all of the ten towns together, as I said, seven went down, three went up. When you factor all that, the net assessment increase was of $43,287. In terms of specifically the town of Auburn, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Yakabuchi. He's taken this presentation that we had ready to come and see you in the springtime, which we did not, uh, we did not get to Auburn this year. And he's juxtaposed on top of that the new numbers, and he can explain that better to you. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I know it's getting late. I wa- I am fully prepared, and I'd be happy to walk you through the entire formula, or, you know, given the time, I'll just focus on the main area, whichever the board's pleasure.
So, do we, um, do we want to ask questions as we go along, or do you want to hold your questions till the end?
I, I just, I have really just one question in, in regard to this, because it's already, it's already been mentioned, so I would...
I mean, it'd probably save some time if I just asked.
Absolutely. So, so rather than going through the entire presentation?
And I just want to point something out. When you are looking at this presentation, as John had mentioned earlier, and I'm just going to focus on page four for one second. If you notice, you'll see in bold, large numbers, the actual numbers that are in the state's calculation as you work through the town of Auburn, underneath in a smaller font, in the grayscale, you'll see some numbers. Those are the numbers that were instituted during the governor's budget. So you can see through the entire formula what has changed. So those small numbers in grayscale are what the governor's numbers had, the large numbers of the past state budget.
So, that's, that's basically my question, because that, that's what, um, what doesn't seem to make sense to me as far, as far as this goes. This was, this was based on, on the governor's numbers, and, and then that was what was submitted. And is there no opportunity, because I know when, for instance, our town budget, you know, we have the preliminary based on what the governor says, and I, I have never, ever seen those numbers hold. Um, and then, you know, what is presented at town meeting with, you know, usually Mr. Kasnovich will present, you know, these things could change depending on what comes out of the House. And this year, I mean, this year especially, what, I, I guess what bothers me the most is that if you go back to March, both the Senate President, Therese Murray, and Mr. DeLeo, the Speaker of the House, said that, you know, these numbers were not even close. There was no way it was going to happen. And, and Mr. DeLeo, in fact, used the phrase that these numbers were constructed in fantasy land. So I, I guess it seems like we're kind of picking up an additional cost because the budget was based on numbers that we knew going in probably weren't going to hold, instead of waiting or being able to adjust them after the House budget came out.
Well, we're, we're kind of stuck under some confinements of our regional agreement. Our regional agreement requires the school committee to adopt the budget by a certain date, certain, and that's why a budget gets adopted and passed on to the communities in the middle of March, because you have to have enough time to react to it and get it on your annual or your spring warrant. I think in all the correspondence that we sent to the town, we made it perfectly clear that this is based on the governor's budget, and it was likely to change based on the deliberations that came out of the House. In terms of your comment about oftentimes the town's numbers change, that's true. And John mentioned earlier that sometimes the Chapter 70 formula and those numbers change, but in most cases, they don't. When the state starts tweaking the state appropriation and the state budget, they're really playing with your unrestricted aid. They pretty much usually leave Chapter 70 in that calculation alone. This year was a, a bit of an anomaly, because they changed the entire formula and the entire calculations that impacted your town. And that's, you can see as you're looking through this whole calculation of, you know, the small little adjustments that were made here along the way that had a pretty large compounding effect on the town of Auburn at the end. I think really the most significant change occurs on page seven of this presentation. And if you'll bear with me for just one moment, you'll see one number that really sticks out to you. And that is the, which is identified as Item C, where you're calculating the local effort reduction. Auburn pays above the amount that the Chapter 70 formula determines. Uh, and that's referred to as local ex- or excess aid at the local level, excess effort, I'm sorry. The governor's budget was attempting to return 100% of that excess effort to the town. So you were receiving, if you will, a credit or additional aid of $1,715,000. What came out of the final deliberation at the state level was that excess, uh, reduction was reduced to 15%. So right there was a huge adjustment to the town, and this is impacting you, I'm sure, on your school budget as well. That excess aid went away, and was reduced from the $1.7 million to $274,000.
Mr. Simontian?
So, if I understand, there is no opportunity after, after you calculate your budget based on the governor's numbers, there's no opportunity to adjust them down the road?
Not without, not without going through the mechanism that we did.
Let me jump in. There's a little difference, Mr. Simontian, between a district that is at minimum and those that are above. So in order for us to comply with the law, Chapter 70 law, our budget does have to stay the same, If we drop below that, we will not be in compliance with the law. A school system that's above the minimum contribution has a couple of options. It can reduce its budget, its bottom-line budget. Our, our budget, even though the town of Auburn will pay $73,000 and some change more, our bottom-line budget has not changed since February 15th.
I understand that part.
It's the allocation between Chapter 70 and local contribution that's changed.
No, I understand. So, is that, so that's an annual thing?
Absolutely.
You are forced to use whatever numbers come out of the governor's office, and...
Well, we could, to your point, we could come up with some other number, but there is no way that we can come any closer to what happened this year, for example.
No, I understand that.
It would have been, if we came here to you in February and said, "Your assessment's going up $100,000 because we believe the governor's numbers are not accurate, and the state is going to do something different," I would have nothing to hang my hat on and say, "This is why I believe that."
I, I understand that. I, I guess the answer that I'm, I'm trying to get is this, this is because the district is forced by dates
Right.
to submit a budget. You have to use what's at hand at that time.
Absolutely. You're 100% correct.
Based on this calculation, which I know we discussed prior
Yep.
of why, why is it that three went up and seven went down?
Okay, you're, the three that went up all have, on page seven, it's called "Local Effort Reduction," based on the fact that you're paying more than what the formula would normally indicate. Okay? In other words, the formula is trying to say how much each town pays out of their tax levy versus how much comes from Chapter 70. If you just run the formula as a standalone, the town of Auburn is paying $1.7 million more than the formula calls for.
I'm with you.
All right. But the mechanism for you to get down to even, let's call it, is this local effort reduction, which is an increase of Chapter 70. But then, the governor wanted to do that all in one year. He was giving you 100%. What ended up coming out of the actual state budget was a 15% reduction. And theoretically, in six and a half years, then you'd be at, at the, where you're supposed to be. So we have three towns in that, in that status. Auburn, Paxton, and Southbridge are contributing more towards their education out of local tax dollars than the Chapter 70 foundation budget would require. The other towns are below the standard. So for example, we had two towns that were more than 10%, 10% away from their target. Well, under the governor's budget, there was going to be a 3% penalty or add-on for those towns to get them closer. So you're getting credit, they were getting an add-on. What finally came out of the state budget was a 2% penalty. We, of course, using the governor's numbers, had a 3% penalty. So when it went to two, they're now getting a reduction of their assessment.
Okay. Now, this is, this is, this, this formula that we're looking at here, this is, this is not the same as what we previously lis- this is not the one that's based on the number of possible students we could send there. This, this is different from that, correct?
This is based on your foundation budget.
So, the foundation budget, can you just expound on that a little bit? That's the, I guess that's the one part I'm fuzzy on where that comes from, because...
If you go to...
So lem- so lem- let me just, I, I guess, put in layman terms. Is it, if, if a town has more in their tax levy, or is...
The foundation budget is a measure of the number of students and the type of students you are educating. So each student carries with them a foundation budget amount, which is the, the minimum that you have to spend.
And that's established by the state, not by, not locally.
All right.
An elementary student costs less under the foundation budget than a middle-high school student. A high school student carries more foundation budget than the middle school, and a vocational student has a higher foundation budget than the high school budget.
Okay.
You take all of those and add them together, and on page eight, you will see that your foundation budget for this current year we're now in is $23,382,934. So that is what the town of Auburn must appropriate at a minimum, and that's not including busing or capital budget items. Okay? That's only on items that count towards net school spending. Bay Path carries 5.3% of that foundation, which translates into $1,239,000. And the Auburn Public Schools carry the rest, which is $22,143. So when we're building our budget, we, and your assessment, we start out, we have to assess you $1,239,000 for your foundation budget, your net minimum contribution. Then we add busing, capital, and debt service. Now, uh, the busing, as I told you at the beginning, we're getting a little extra aid. So we've reduced your busing assessment between the first budget and second budget by about $9,000, I think it is. Uh, and there is no capital, but of course, this year, there is the debt service.
So that foundation budget is largely driven by the number of students that
Yes.
we have at the various levels?
The foundation budget is absolutely driven by that.
Okay.
But as I say, each, each student at a different level carries a little bit of a different amount.
And my, and my last question, so potentially, year over year, this could, we could be in this position. Since you are, are forced to submit a budget by a certain date and use those numbers that exist at the time, that, if, if we're in this situation every year for the life of this loan, project, whatever, however you want to call it, we could be in the same position where an additional amount would be assessed?
Okay, but let's not, let's not confuse the loan with, with this.
No, no, I, I mean, the, the amount, the assessment amount, I'm sorry.
Every year, yeah, every year, we're subject to variations in the assessment. Most of the time...
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah, no, no, but mostly the time, the assessment, the, the state final budget is usually better than the governor's budget.
Absolutely.
But in, in this year, it's been dramatically different. And of course, one big factor for you is that excess contribution you're making. And what does the legislature and the governor do to mitigate that? This year, they gave you credit for 15%. Governor wanted to give you the 100%. So every, you know, but how many kids end up coming to Bay Path influences that, absolutely.
Hey, and I think what might really make it easier and hammer home your point, if you go to the other handout that we passed out, and turn to page three, we've provided for you a breakout of the change for all of the towns in the district, not Auburn, not just Auburn's. But if you look at Auburn, and that's the page that looks like this with Auburn on the top, you can see exactly what components of your assessment changed. Minimum contribution is calculated by the Commonwealth. Originally, it was $750,000. The revised budget put your minimum contribution at $832,000, a change of $82,235. The district received additional state aid for transportation, and the school committee voted to reallocate that back to the communities. So that caused your transportation to drop $8,600, and that is how you see the net change of $73,000.
All right. I appreciate you explaining it. Thanks.
Mr. Ostrom.
Through the chair, to the town manager, how is this going to affect our budget overall for the, the annual budget?
Through the chair, let me just go through a few figures for you. First of all, the, the actual dollar impact, as has been mentioned, is $73,634. So that's the additional amount of money that we need to come up with for the Bay Path allocation. When you look at the budget that the town of Auburn submitted and had approved by town meeting in May, we actually, we had used the House numbers. And we also conservatively estimated a 2% reduction in state aid. After town meeting came through, we explained, as we have done the last couple of years, that we go back to town meeting in the fall and make adjustments based on the final state numbers. So what has happened since the time that we brought this and received approval at town meeting is that we had an excess of $492,507. That excess was due to an increase in state aid in the final numbers. And again, because we, we were conservative and estimated a decrease. We actually got an increase. And we also refinanced our debt last fall when we did a number of things through the bond rating and some debt restructuring. We refinanced our debt and came up with a savings of $186,000. So between the increase in the state aid and the savings, we actually had $492,507 that had not been expended. Now, add to that, we recently negotiated healthcare, co-pays and deductible changes amongst our, our unions that will result in about $285,000 beginning January 1 for a six-month period of this coming fiscal year. And we also received about $135,000 in excess tax revenues for growth that we actually received above the $400,000 figure that we used. So again, we, we estimated conservatively a $400,000 increase in our growth, and we actually have a $535,000 increase in our growth, as of now. So when you take all of this together, as of today, our total available unobligated funds are $912,316. Now, let me go back. If we look at the policy that the Board of Selectmen voted, as well as the Finance Committee voted, they voted to take any of the revenues over and above the $400,000 in new growth, to take any of the new growth above that, excuse me, not revenues, new growth above that, and apply it to the reduction of the tax rate. So if we take the $135,000 that we have over and above the 400, and we take it off of the $912 that we have unobligated, we have $777,316. That's the part of money from which we would take out the additional funds that are needed for Bay Path. So that would be the $73,634, which would bring us to about $704,000 still available within the money that's been allocated from town meeting. So let me point out that the $704,000 is within the 1.68%. And again, the 1.68% is equivalent of, it is made up of 1.25%, which is what we wanted to stay at. The board policy of putting 0.25% toward capital, so now we're at 1.5%. And then, when the first vote did not go through in all of the communities for Bay Path, that was for a debt exclusion. The second vote that came through was not for debt exclusion, that was to take it out of tax levy. So that gets added into the tax levy. So that's a 1.68% when you add that in. If we now use the 130, $135,000 to apply it toward that per the policy of the board, we would bring our rate back down to about 1.26%. And that would be after payment to the vocational school. And at this point, myself and the CFO, Ed Kezenovic, are discussing and coming up with some strategies because some of these numbers are new, and we want to be able to come back with our recommendations. But one thing I want to point out, we did not put money into stabilization intentionally in May because we wanted to wait for the state numbers. We did that the last two years. This is the third year that we've done that. We said we were going to wait and get the actual numbers. Now that we know the numbers, now that we're, we have our other certifications, we will be going, coming back in the fall to town meeting and recommending certain expenditures with this money, one of which is stabilization. We had committed to the board that we wanted to do stabilization funds. We intend to do that every year, and we do have the funds to do that. We'll also be looking at other needs and make sure that we've met all the needs and discussing other options, including potentially financing capital through the tax levy so that we wouldn't have to borrow for it, which would reduce our debt service. So those are the kinds of decisions that we're making. But the bottom line is here tonight that the $73,634 can be taken out of the $912,316, $912,316 that we currently have. And that still gives us plenty of revenue to then meet the board's policies of reducing by the excess growth and then also looking at stabilization. And then there would still be funding left, and we would still be under the 1.26.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Salfaj.
Madam Chair, and through you, since we're here this evening, I know, just a brief update, we've really started working quite diligently on the project. In fact, on Friday, they tarred our new access road that was built over the summer, and we're going to be starting on the foundation to the new building within about three or four weeks. And I just wanted to point out, we're talking assessments, we're talking that we did borrow the first third of the local share on the project, and you saw an assessment this year for that first share. It's projected that on January 1 of both 14 and 15, we'll do another slug each of $9 million. So we will be seeing increases in assessments for that for the next three years, and then it levels off. It's a level debt service after that. But certainly, if any of the board members ever wanted to come up, see the facility, take, get a tour, or see what's happening on the ground, we'd, we'd love to have you up there. We're very excited. You know, we, we had teachers in today for the first day, and of course, our, our parking has been completely devastated. I think we have one extra parking spot, so call me and I'll put your name on it if you're coming up. But we, we thank you, and we thank the town of Auburn's voters for the support they gave us last October. And we're still ensuring that we will not go over the budget in any way, shape, or form, so we won't be back asking you for any more money on that building. No matter how many times Mr. Erickson has to say, "Let's cut this," or "Let's cut that." So we do thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. And anytime you have questions.
And I just want to thank our Bay Path School Committee representatives, Mr. Erickson and Mr. Horroyan, for being here as well in case board members had any questions.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming in and have a successful school year. Could I have a, a motion for a brief recess?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And seeing the late hour, and we have a couple people here for some agenda items. I'll entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item 7, Town Manager Items.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So the first Town Manager Item we have is an update on the Chapter 90 Roadways Project, and we have a sheet, a handout from tonight.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to ask Bill Coyle, the DPW Director, to come up and speak to this. He wanted to provide an update to the board.
Great.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie and Sharon. Wanted to come before you this evening and just give you an update of our Chapter 90 and our roadway reconstruction program. The project that was advertised about a year ago, from now for fiscal year 2013, funding is about 90%, 95% complete. That consists of about, I believe, 17 roadways. And currently, we are working to advertise the next round of, of projects or roadways. And I've provided you with a list of what those, what those roads are. We've tried to come up with a, a good mix of neighborhood streets and a few somewhat more major roadways. And before I give you the list, I just wanted to let the board know that, in, in the general, the public, that the beginning of the year, myself and the Assistant Town Engineer drive every road in town. We drive all public roads, 90 miles of roads, and all the private roads as well, just to assess the condition of those roads. And we basically come up with a, a rating of, of the condition of the roadway. And basically, we, we grade them one through five, one being the worst condition, five being essentially brand new. And I, I can tell you that after this next round is advertised, I believe we are down to about 4.8 miles, which is still significant of what we rated as a one, which is in, in poor condition. But 4.8 miles is probably about roughly 5%, 6% of our roadway. So I think we've, we've come quite a ways, and I think largely in part to the town's commitment to funding our roadway program. They're currently funding a half a million dollars through the Engineers' Roadway Reconstruction account, and I think that, that's been a significant benefit to the town, and it's probably, the town funds are almost half of the funding that we get total for our projects. So this year's contract consists of approximately $1.1 million, and again, that is comprised of $600,000 in Chapter 90 funding that we get from the state and $500,000 in town funds. In addition to that, there, there are also funding, funds through Stormwater, replace pipes and catch basins in the Engineers' Drainage Account as well. And all those monies go towards improving the town's roadways. So this list, and I'll read through them, and I'd be happy to go into any detail that you'd like. Most of these roads are reclamation, with the exception of the bottom one, which is a mill and overlay. And before I go through that, we, we are trying to get away from reclamation to some extent because it's the most costly means of repairing a roadway and trying to get more towards milling and overlay. But the first street, I believe it's alphabetical, is A Street from Sword Street to the end, about 680 feet. That's off of, off of Sword, obviously. Colonial Road from Maria Ave to the end. Gilbert Way from Bond Street to the Millbury Town Line. Hampton Street from Elmwood Street to the Worcester City Line. Idlewood Drive from Rockland Road to the end. Little Drive from Idlewood Drive to Colonial Road. Maria Avenue, Idlewood, Idlewood Drive to the end. Mill Street from Millbury Street to Route 20. Millbury Street, and I have a disclaimer on Millbury Street, from Route 20 to the Millbury Town Line and Sword Street, which would be a mill and overlay. Millbury Street, in the contract, we are providing language that gives the town the ability to essentially pull that roadway from the contract and basically swap that with another roadway, depending on what happens in Millbury with the slot's power. We want to make sure we leave the town some flexibility on either seeking other alternatives of funding or just evaluating what, what the extent of improvements would be to Millbury Street. But if, if slot, the slot's power did not go, didn't go forward, Millbury Street from Route 20 to Millbury Town Line would be one that we see as a major roadway still in the town that is in much need of improvement. The total of all of these add up to about 3.1 miles, and again, about 1.1 to 1.2 million. Worth noting is also other improvements to Hampton Street from Kimball Street, or Kimball Road to Elmwood Street would be done by the Elm Hill Water District. There may be some small areas that Elm Hill aren't doing that we may look to try to fill those, those areas in so we can complete the entire length. I think they're more obligated to only repair the areas that they've damaged, but we've worked very closely with them to try to include as much as we could. And they're also going to be doing repairs on Clarendon, Kimball, and the entire length of Betty Street as well.
Mr. Coyle, could I ask you a question on Gilbert Way?
Yes.
I know that Gilbert Way is, half the road is in Auburn and half the road is in Millbury. And I know a lot of times when they pave a road, they'll contact the community, and one town will do it, and either reimburse the town. Have you been in contact with Millbury?
We have, and I was going to, going to get to that. The, we are working with the town of Millbury. I, I did add it to the list because it is a roadway that would be included in our funding. The majority of the road, it's probably 75% to 80% of it, is actually in Millbury. So they're going to look to take the lead on this project, being, having the bulk of the roadway. So we are engineering our portion of it. We've already sent the information over to Millbury. They'll be engineering their portion of it, putting it into one contract. We have a, a draft memorandum of understanding that's come to the town. We reviewed it, Town Manager has reviewed it, sent it back to us, and we've just sent it back to Millbury, actually, today. So that'll be, I believe, coming before the board in a, in a few weeks.
So just, just, and I asked that question in case people ask, you know, saw the work happening and said, "Well, you know, that's part of it's in Millbury. Who's paying for it?" I didn't want people thinking that either Millbury's paying for Auburn's share or Auburn's paying for Millbury's share. The, the work is done all at once, but the town reimburses the other for footage, per footage.
Correct. We, every item, we have calculated, and there's probably 50 different items on each roadway, and we'll keep track of all the, all the quantities. It's kind of a very short section, so it's pretty easy to quantify.
Right. But just to, just for the record, we're not paving Millbury, and Millbury's not paving Auburn.
Correct. Each, each community will be responsible for what's in their town.
Thank you.
And I wanted to add also, the town, through the Engineers Department, and Joanna Paquelin, the Assistant Town Engineer, spent a lot of time last year going through every road that the town has that we are currently receiving Chapter 90 funds for. But what she looked at was to make sure that the list of roads that the, the state has, Mass DOT, included every accepted town road. And what we found were several roads that we have accepted as town roads that they did not have record of. So that information had been sent along to them, and I don't have the exact mileage, but it basically resulted in about an additional $20,000 this year that we received based on the roadways that had been accepted. And some, some of the acceptances go back to the 1960s that they had no record of. So by doing that, we've increased what we're getting at Chapter 90, about, about $20,000. The contract that I'm referring to, this is the, the FY 2014 contract, is just going out to, out to bid now, and we have an anticipated bid opening date of September 12th. So given this money is FY 2014 money, it doesn't give us a lot of time to get work done before the winter season, but we're going to try to get as much done as we, as we can. And again, it's, we're wrapping up last year's contract, and we're going to see what we can get done with this round of contracts. A lot of it's going to depend on the contractor, who's a successful bidder, and what their workload is too, and how much we want to open up before winter. I think we want to be careful in not opening up too much. I'll be happy to answer any, any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. Did you have anything to add? If you can just wait there for one minute. Can I have a motion to move up? It'll be a very quick item, 6A6.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So I, I realize this is an agenda item that you can address as well. The request to begin the street acceptance process, sometime back, we had had a request from Mr. Boscler to, you know, please accept this as a formal request to start the process for the town of Auburn to accept Camden Drive as a public road. So if you could just let the board know what action we would take tonight, basically just refer, you know, take a motion to ask the Board of Planning, Planning Board-
Correct.
...for a report.
Correct. I believe the motion would be to defer it to, to Planning Board for recommendation, but the engineer, and Engineers' Office. We, we have already reviewed Camden Drive, and last week, we, we walked the roadway to see what deficiencies there were, and the letter was sent to the Planning Board today. So we've already completed the Engineers' review, and he has several items that need to be addressed. And he has several items that need to be addressed. It's possible he could get them all done before town meeting. Certainly, there are a number of outstanding issues that need to be corrected.
Okay. And once this board sends it to the Planning Board, and if it comes back with an unfavorable report, then this board can either choose not to put it on the warrant or vote to not recommend the article?
Correct.
Do any members have any questions on this? So I entertain a motion to...
Make a motion to accept, or make a motion to defer the request to the Planning Board and the DPW Director for a report on Camden Drive road acceptance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Getting out of here.
This is the list, this is the list I've been looking forward to.
Okay.
Just, you know, because now I can go for walks in my own neighborhood again without people stopping me to ask, when's my road getting done?
Right. Well, we are trying to look at certain neighborhoods, too, when we're in that area, and not doing one street. If they're all bad, we try to do all of them. It's more a cost-effective way to repair them as well.
Actually, I do have one question. You, I know you said that there's, what, four point six miles of the ones?
Four point eight.
Four point eight miles. What, do you, do you know, like, whatever it was, four or five years ago when we really started focusing, what you were at for once, this ballpark?
I'd have to go back and count. I can, I can tell you that it was significant. But I don't have the exact number. But looking at what we've received in state and federal dollars, just off the cuff, I know Millbury Street, Swanson Road, Vine Street, Water Street, all those roads were paid with state and federal dollars. So those were significant, even those alone would add up to several million dollars worth of work.
I just wanted to point out, it's a common question, and people understand, you know, it is moving forward.
It is, it's definitely moving forward, and I can see our ability to get the roads done. I think the thing that we have to be careful of is making sure we don't lose sight of keeping our good roads good, too. You can't always focus on the worst first, so we have to try to balance some of that too, upcoming years with maintenance as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, you're all set for the night? The next item we have is an update on the surrounding community impact study, the Millbury Gaming Facility. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, at the last meeting, we had somewhat of a discussion, and a lot of information had since been submitted to the board that I received from the town of Millbury. Just wanted to keep you in the loop. It's all information that's public. Just wanted to make sure the board had it. Since we were last here two weeks ago, at that time, I had submitted a letter to the applicant requesting two things. Number one was for consideration for surrounding community designation prior to their applicant's submittal of the application on October 4th, or by October 4th. And the second one was technical assistance funding to fund a impact analysis. And I believe the day after the board meeting, I did hear back from, we had played telephone tag the day of the board meeting, the day after we did touch base. And I've had a couple of discussions with the applicant. At this point, we're still discussing the possibility. In the interim, last week, I also had a couple of discussions with the Mass Gaming Commission again, because I wanted to find out what were the options available to the town should the applicant decide not to designate us as a surrounding community or not to give us the technical assistance funding. And I'm not saying that they've said that yet, but just trying to look a couple steps ahead and anticipate, what if they did do that, what would we do? The state has informed me that there is an opportunity for communities that believe that they have a high likelihood of being designated as a surrounding community to seek involuntary technical assistance funding from the state. But that cannot be done until, it's my understanding, but from the state, it can't be done until after the applications are submitted in October. So there is another potential opportunity for funding for the technical assistance study. So we're running on parallel courses here. We're trying to get the applicant to recognize that we truly believe we should meet the criteria for surrounding community, and in order to negotiate an agreement, we need an impact analysis. And we're also looking for, right now, we're in the process of getting quotes from consultants who have been pre-approved by the state, so we would not have to actually take the time to put it out to bid. But if we go off the pre-approved list, and there are probably seventy-five or a hundred consultants on that list, so we're starting to call some of those consultants to get an estimate of what the cost of the study will be. So when we do sit down again with the applicant, we'll have a figure that we can give them as to what we're seeking.
Mr. Holstrom, then, Mr. Simonian.
Through the chair, I think the proactive approach with this impact study, I think, is just excellent. I think it's a right move. I think we should be moving forward with it. My question is, Millbury, when do they go for their vote?
September.
To decide on the slot power or not? Do you know what the date is on that?
Through the chair, I'm going to try to go back into my memory, but it's 21st or 24th?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, September 24th.
Twenty-fourth, September. So if that goes through in Millbury, because I know that there's several others that are looking at it also, so it's going to be kind of a toss-up. We do the impact study. If somebody else gets it, we can still use that impact study to help us out with that area, with roads, with what have you. Is that quite good to be looking at?
Basically, our first preference would be to get the funding for the impact study and get it underway as soon as possible. Because whether we can negotiate a surrounding community agreement prior to October 4th at this point, probably not. There's not a lot of time to get the data that we need to do that. But if we, if the state were to designate us as a surrounding community post-application submission, by statute, we only have thirty days to negotiate an agreement, or it gets sent to an arbitrator.
Which is a very, very tight schedule.
So it's a really tight schedule. So we're trying to find, at least now, put together somewhat of a scope of services, get a cost, and understand what it is we're going to be looking for from the impact analysis, with the understanding that we hope the applicant funds it. And if they don't, our second choice is to go to the state and ask them for the involuntary technical assistance, which my understanding is, from the state, that most applicants don't want to have to go through that process. Because it's not a positive, it's not a positive outlook on their project if they haven't done the outreach and reached out to potential surrounding communities to talk to them. So right now, we are in the discussion stage, but the discussions need to wrap up quickly because we need an answer.
Mr. Simonian?
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thanks for the information that you sent us, because I went through pretty much most of this. And obviously, it's a comprehensive study on Millbury, not us. But do they have specific criteria for designating you as a surrounding community? It seems like it would be either a slam dunk, yes or no, either you meet the criteria or you don't, or is it arbitrary?
Through the chair, the criteria isn't specific as far as data, but it is specific as far as what categories classify impacts. And those categories are traffic, infrastructure, public safety impacts, potentially impacts on the immediately surrounding neighborhood as far as assessed valuations, economic impacts on local businesses, and social impacts. So there are probably eight different categories, and according to the regulations, to qualify for surrounding community designation, the community has to make a strong argument that it's experiencing significant impacts in, I believe, one or more or all of those areas. Obviously, the more areas that you can show that there's impacts, the more opportunity you have to be considering.
So this is, this is done by, this would be someone we hired to do that impact study? And they have how long?
Through the chair, if the, there are three different options for being designated as a surrounding community. The first one is for the applicant to designate us now, prior to their application being submitted. The second one is for them to designate us now and enter into a surrounding community agreement prior to October 4th. And the third one is for the state to designate us if the applicant does not. So under the first two scenarios, well, under the first scenario, if we're designated as a surrounding community, we probably have until sometime at the end of October to develop a surrounding community agreement. If the second option is that they would designate us and also have the surrounding community agreement executed, and they put the whole thing together and put it in their packet by October 4th, that only gives us four weeks. Honestly, I don't see how that can happen, because we can't even get a consultant on board until we recognize or realize that we have the funding to do that.
So it doesn't seem that there's anything that compels them to designate us as a surrounding community, nor does it seem like it's in their best interest to designate us as a surrounding community?
Actually, it's in their best interest, because under the regulations that the state has promulgated for applicants for casinos or slot facilities, in this case, a slot facility, the state will weigh more favorably to those applicants that did their own outreach and designated or worked with the surrounding communities or potential surrounding communities to mitigate the impacts, or at least to recognize that there'll be impacts. So it's to their benefit to designate us as a surrounding community, and it's certainly to their benefit to, if nothing else, give us the opportunity to have the technical assistance funding so we can get an impact study underway. And that's what I've been discussing with them.
And if we submit that after the October 4th, that's the third option?
Right, correct. The third option is if the applicant comes back and says to us, no, we are not going to designate you as a surrounding community after October 4th, once their application is into the state, we can go to the state and request the state designate us as a surrounding community.
All right, let me, two different things. I get that part. If they do designate us as a surrounding community, what is, is there a deadline then for us to have that impact statement done and submitted?
If the applicant designates us as a surrounding community, and they want to include an executed surrounding community agreement in their application, we have until October 4th.
So it's October 4th either way?
It's October 4th under that scenario. If the applicant chooses to just designate us as a surrounding community, and we want to continue to discuss with them and get the impact study done, I believe we will probably have until sometime at the end of October, maybe even November, to get the agreement in place, as long as we were designated as a surrounding community. If they say no to all of the above, then we go to the state after October 4th. And then, let's say the state doesn't even designate us until November, the state would then give us thirty days to come up with an agreement. According to the state, they want all the surrounding community agreements and designations to be done and in place and executed by the beginning of December. So that's their target. So whether we're, we have that done by October 4th when they submit, at this point, I don't see that happening. I don't think the town would have the ability to analyze the impacts. We just received a draft E and R today, the environmental notification report. It's this thick. It just came in today. So there are a lot of things that we have to do internally, in addition to hiring a consultant to do it on our behalf, and we want to do it right. So I don't think we would be able to have anything signed and in place by October 4th, but certainly, we're going to fast-track it as much as we can to have it done in time for the state's deadlines, whichever deadline that is, depending on what route we have to take.
Are there any more board questions? Mr. Plutukas, did you have something? Just your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Bob Plutukas, 231 Millbury Street, town meeting member, Precinct One. I have a lot of questions, but I'll try to keep it, keep it simple. Is Millbury Street going to be paved this year?
I think, I think that was...
Is Millbury Street going to be paved this year?
Given the time it comes out of bid, but I don't like next, next year.
If I read a newspaper article correctly earlier this year, it mentioned by a state worker that he thought that Millbury Street and McCracken Road was a connecting road between 146 and Route 20. What are the ramifications of that? If you, if the state now, I know that they didn't say, they said we weren't before, because I know when they were doing the diversion tunnel, I went to that meeting, and they claimed it was not a connecting road at that time. Now it seems that they are changing their tune, and I believe it has ramifications. What are those ramifications?
Through the chair, if I could just respond, this is one of the reasons we need to do, collect the data and do an impact analysis. We don't know what the ramifications are at this point. There are a lot of different factors that go into this, so I don't think we could even answer that, but it's important that we look at not just the impacts there, but on other surrounding roads that are going to lead into and out of this facility.
To add to that, if you would, please, keep in mind that Millbury Street is a scenic road, and I'd hate to see it go by the wayside. If you go to Framingham, Mass, and you go off Route 9, you head towards the Medical Center and towards Framingham University, right there, it says scenic road. It's not a scenic road anymore. The sign says scenic, it's a highway. And that's my concern with it becoming a connector, a connector road, is that they may want to widen it, which means land-taking, elimination of trees, the conservation committee, and all the ramifications of it not being a scenic road. They have to build a much stronger base. You know, you've heard me come up here and complain about eighteen-wheelers on Millbury Street right on my corner blocking me for half an hour. I've seen them, three of them, just in my experience. I don't know how many others there have been, and how they ever got to Millbury, I'll never know. But I know this, that if that road is widened, you'll see a lot more trucks that large. And it'd be devastating in some cases, because there are a couple cliffs that could fall off of. A lot of the homes that were built there, their septic fields are not that far from the road. And I don't know which side would have to be widened. So this, the ramifications of it becoming a connector road are great for the residents who live on that street. And not to mention the beautiful stone walls that have been put up and have been there for a long time, and some of which are retaining walls. For myself, how would my driveway come down? If they ever, they'd have to take land on my side, that's for sure, because the other side is a cliff, and they couldn't fill that in. And then what happens to my driveway and the scenic aspect of that? When was the last time we did a count? Do we still have the counts from before? It was, we had the mall traffic.
Are you referring to traffic counts?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm, the traffic count.
Through the chair, if I can just respond to some of these things. These are all part of the things that need to be looked at through an impact analysis. We know it's a scenic road. That's one of the impacts that gets looked at by traffic engineers. When it comes to counts, you know, we've been working to collect the counts prior to the mall, after the mall, and current counts. So we are getting that data as best we can. Whatever we can't get, we'll follow the consultant to get. So that are, those are all things that are looked at as part of this. I wish we could answer you now, Mr. Plutukas, but we can't until we get this impact study. But I think your comments highlight the need to look at this carefully and make sure that we have the appropriate professionals looking at this. DPW is looking at it, the DPW Director, Engineering Department, we have to look at it from a utility perspective. We need the Water Department to look at it, the Sewer Division to look at it, we need police to look at it, fire to look at it, and then we need to get an outside consultant who can come in and do the specific traffic, infrastructure, and public safety impact analysis on it. And all of these questions at that point would be answered. Right now, we haven't even, we're not at that point yet. But we recognize that these are the issues.
I'm only speaking as a concerned citizen who lives on the street, and I'm up here speaking because the last time, when I went to the diversion tunnel on, the town representative did not represent the people on the street. He represented the entity called the town, and the concerns of the resident, residents were not taken into account. I still have a copy of that, and I don't want to see that happen again. That's why I'm up here speaking. And sometimes there's what's good for the residents, and sometimes there's what's good for the town. And I want to, I'm more concerned in this case with what's good for the residents, in this case, also myself. As part of that count, I think it's important to note how many come from out of state. As I stand in my driveway, several feet from the street, believe me, especially if it's raining, there are an awful lot of Rhode Island and Connecticut cars going down Millbury Street. Every day, when I go to Cumberland Farms at the top of the street, I'll see Rhode Island and mainly Connecticut cars gassing up every day. Now, whether they work at the mall or anything else, and does that, can that bring more money into the town? This is another thing that I'd like to see included in that study. But I'd like to know, so we're going to get paved next year? Maybe, if it's a connector road. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Plutukas, before you leave, I just had a couple questions for you on something that you had said. You said, it was first said that Route 2146 wasn't a connecting road, now it is a connecting road. You said they are, they are changing their tunes. Just to follow up on that, who is, they are changing their tune?
Well, the, the original was a state committee of engineers that met at Millbury Town Hall. It was not advertised in the town of Auburn, but as a retiree, I tend to read everything. And I happened to read that this was advertised, and... And I happened to read that this was advertised in Worcester Magazine, but it wasn't advertised in the Auburn News that the diversion tunnel bridge was going to be closed for two years. Well, all kinds of lights came in my brain, I mean, I know what Milbury's going to do, they're going to send the traffic our way, like they did one Christmas, they made it one-way, so that more traffic went on Milbury Street. They didn't even ask the residents.
Right.
Now, so that was, that was a state agency. At that time, contrary to what the representative from the town of Auburn was asking, I asked that question, is it a connecting road? Absolutely not, absolutely not. That was my concern. Of course, another one of my concern was, is that as you drove on Milbury Street and you saw the trucks going over it, you could see the pavement moving. You could see that, until Bill came up with, and I have to compliment him with the great idea to do a coating over it, which is lasted for a few years, and I thank him very much for that, because the road, you could see it moving. And I brought some of the dust from in front of my driveway that was just, it had all crumbled from the truck traffic. That road was a cow path, you know, it wasn't built to handle trucks.
So I just want to follow up on the, on a couple of your statements. So you said, "They are changing their tune." Like, who are they? Who, who are they who are changing their tune so that we can approach and say, who are they?
Well, if we can, you can trace it right back to, you know, you could probably trace it back very easily in your office.
But you said you read it somewhere. Like, who are they?
It was last month in the newspaper, in the telegraphing Gazette, when they talked first about, it was a state representative saying, said it was a connector road.
Okay, and my second question is, you mentioned the 18-wheels. Is there a truck exclusion on that road? I thought there was a truck exclusion.
I tried to get one, and so have other residents on that road.
So there's not, there's never been a truck exclusion?
We tried the best we could.
So I just-
It's kind of, it's kind of scary when you see an 18-wheel come over Montclair Drive, which is rarely wide, okay? And then he's trying to make the corner on Milbury Street, heading towards Milbury, and he's halfway off the cliff with his front tires, and his other tires are in my yard, and I'm trying to get out of my driveway. And I'm looking at the driver like, once you get around that corner, how are you going to do the S bends going into Milbury? I have no idea how he made it. And the best we could get, Bill put a sign up at the beginning of the road that the road narrows. I mean, that's what we got, got out of it, that was the best that we could do. Is hopefully that, I mean, when you see a wide road at the beginning of Route 20 in Milbury Street, the truck driver thinks it's wide all the way, but it isn't. And if they, if they just, the GPS may tell them to go that way. Just as they, you know, as, as this traffic impact goes through, they're going to all head towards Milbury Street, or the other one they're going to head to when they find out that it's a nice shortcut and a scenic road, is South Street. You go right down South Street, take the first left, take the next left, go right into the center of Milbury. No traffic. I use it every day, instead of going down Route 20. As soon as they, as soon as they see it's all jammed up on Route 20, they come on Milbury Street. Those that are coming off 395, it won't take them long to go right down South Street. And that, that road isn't built for it either.
I think Bill had wanted to respond to one of those.
Just for, I believe what Mr. Plutukas is referring to, a couple of years ago, there was discussion of trying to reclassify Milbury Street and McCracken Road between Auburn and Milbury to become a collector road. It's currently functionally classified as a local road, so it's ineligible for, to receive federal funds, and there was discussion of changing that. Now, what had happened, I think recently, is McCracken Road in Milbury, from Greenwood Street to the 146 bridge that goes up to the mall, that section of roadway is, is an approved project by Mass. DOT, because that particular section of roadway is classified as a collector road. So that short segment is up to Greenwood Street, but beyond that is not. It's still a local roadway, and everything that Mr. Plutukas is talking about, the traffic volumes and truck traffic and different things, will be looked at as part of the environmental notification form process. So certainly, we'll be commenting along the way on potential impacts.
So that they are changing their tunes, that's Mass. DOT?
I don't think they're changing their tune. I think what it is, is maybe more just that, it's been discussion that McCracken Road is a local road. McCracken Road is a local road west of Greenwood Street, but is, it's a collector road east of Greenwood Street. So that short segment from Greenwood Street to 146 ramping system is a, I believe functionally classified as a collector road, which makes it eligible for federal funds. So they're not, they're not really changing their tune, it's just a little bit of confusion, I think, on the fact that McCracken Road has two functional classifications.
But it's, just to be clear, it's Mass. DOT who's having these discussions?
I think it was a public hearing that was held on the McCracken Road project, because they do have a project, and they were, I believe, holding a public hearing either on a conceptual design or a may, I don't think it's at the 25% design level yet, but it was just a public hearing process that was held in Milbury because of Milbury Project, which is separate, I think Bob was also referring to a bridge project of a hearing that he went to as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions on the Milbury Gaming Facility?
My problem with the bridge project, it was, it wasn't advertised in Auburn, and there was no way that Auburn residents could know that it was going to affect them. And everybody else that was there was from Milbury, and they were more than happy to let the traffic come our way, trust me.
Well, this board has asked that any, any action hearings, anything that happened in Milbury, that this board be notified, and then we in turn can pass that information along.
And can they be required to put it in the Auburn News or the some-
I don't, I don't know what the requirement, the legal requirements off of advertising, it's not a, it's a, it's a public hearing.
Yes.
I don't know what the requirements are. We can check on that certainly, but I don't, I don't know what the requirements are.
And I think we're talking about two different terms here. Bill is talking about a collector road, and I'm talking about a connector between 20 and 146. So that's my point, is if it becomes a connecting road, I believe it's also eligible for funds, which is one thing I was fighting for, if they were going to force it, no, no. So I'm wrong.
Dr. Plutukas, another program?
Bill, I'm sorry if you're going to, we have to, so the people at home listening can hear you.
The functional classification, they don't have a technical functional classification called connector road. So currently, the functional classification of Milbury Street and McCracken Road up to Greenwood Street is not eligible. Now, the only funding it would be potentially eligible for would be mitigation funds is from the development, but it's, it's not eligible for federal funding at this point, unless they would try to apply for different grants potentially, but not through the normal funding process.
Thank you. And I'm sure-
Thank you for listening.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you for waiting. You'll keep us informed of any hearings, et cetera, on this. Okay, so we're leaving town manager items, and we are going back to Board of Selectment Items, general items. We've had the discussion on the Bay Path Assessment. Number two appointments. Recently, we had a resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we also made an appointment for a full position. Right now, the makeup of the board is four full members and one alternate member. The alternate member is Robert Tatro, and I believe he's the longest-serving alternate. Generally, they are moved up to the full position, but that didn't happen. So we need to fill a full position, and we need to advertise for vacancies. So the board may wish to designate Mr. Tatro as a full member. He's already sitting in on most of the hearings now, because they're a full-member board, and then the board would advertise for two alternates on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Holstrom, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to make Robert Tatro a full member on the Board, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? There's no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So now the-
I'd like to make a motion to advertise for vacancies for alternate positions for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Two vacancies for alternate positions.
Second.
Mr. Simone, who seconded? Mr. Simonean seconded that? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And in your pocket, you have a request from the town clerk to appoint an additional election worker, Diane Spanos of Precinct 2, for a term beginning September 1, 2013, and expiring August 31, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And I just put this on for discussion, because it's a couple significant policies, and then I know tonight you were just giving a couple draft items. I'm going to begin with the easy one. And I think Mr. Holstrom had requested both of these. So Mr. Holstrom, if you can just, first of all, take a look at this and let me know if this is what you had in mind. The, the proposed amendment to the Board of Selectment Agenda Policy, we kept in mind that this wasn't, this didn't have anything to do with the open meeting law requirements. It was a Auburn Board of Selectmen member item policy, so that all members, you know, had the same information to make an informed discussion and vote, so.
As it's drafted here, I like how it's drafted. It does give the, the ability for the other members to hear, well, have a little bit of a summary so that they can talk intelligently about a policy of a member. And as I see it drafted here, I like it the way it's drafted.
Is there any other member comment? Mr. Simonean?
This is, this is in regard to what? It doesn't seem clear. I guess, maybe I'm missing something. Provide a written summary of what?
Of the member item.
The member items.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then I would like a lot more detail on this, because the way it's written, it seems pretty arbitrary. Provide a written summary. Considering past history on this board, that leaves a lot to interpretation. So if you're going to have something like that, that it's a written summary, I think it should have specific criteria that it has to meet to be, because I don't want to get back into what we've had in the past. This, this isn't worded properly, it doesn't meet the right criteria, all of that, so I, I think this is kind of arbitrary and very subjective, the way it's written.
Okay, well, we haven't had a policy regarding member items. The only things that were sent back is that they didn't meet the criteria, the open meeting law criteria. And, and all member items will continue to meet the open meeting law criteria. This is a Board of Selectment policy. So if you can just let me know what you mean by additional information on a written summary.
Well, what constitutes a written summary? A one sentence, a paragraph? Do I, specific criteria that speak to the member item? I don't-
And I think, and Mr. Holstrom can speak to this. I think the spirit of it was that, so that all members had enough information to know that was going to be discussed. Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, I think, Steve, what I'm looking at is, instead of having a member come up with, you know, school budget, well, that leaves wide-open discussion. Well, let's define what in the school budget, or what in the town budget, or what in a certain department do you want to speak of? Be a little bit specific, and in, I think that kind of lends itself to, the member request is provide a proposed motion if you want to go to that, that extent with a discussion. So it's not a case of, you know, I think the open meeting law will not be violated. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at what would a member bringing information forward and asking about, well, what do they want to speak of? Just not in, in general terms, we want to have a little bit more specific to say a line item on a budget, instead of just a budget.
Okay, and I understand that, and I apologize, through the chair, to Mr. Holstrom. I, I understand that point. I completely get it. I just, what's provided for in the open meeting law, it seems to make sense to me. And so, given that explanation, here's, here's where I guess I have a little more of a problem now, because if someone wanted to discuss, and they, and they just wanted to put it, put it as agenda item, school budget, and that was rejected because it was too general, now would they have to discuss a specific item? And if someone were to comment, well, we can't talk about that. Now we've kind of handcuffed ourselves, so we have to wait two more weeks to have additional discussion on something that may be pertinent to that, that topic. And, and that's why, like, this seems to be a little more restrictive, rather than just going with what open meeting provides. I have no problem with, you know, the chairman calling me or sending me a text message and saying, "This is a little vague, can you, you know, I don't understand," or one of the members doesn't understand, because I would ask the same question of any of you. Maybe it's me, but I don't get it, what are you trying to get at here? And, and provide that. But, but to put it on paper where, and I don't know if this would be the case, but if I, if that specific, or it's not specific enough, is that cause for it to be rejected as a member item? And now, I, now it's too late, because I got it back on a Wednesday afternoon, and there's not time to get it in for that meeting, so now we have to wait two more weeks to discuss. You see, I just think that the more you restrict it, the more opportunity there is to miss those deadlines, to get it on the agenda, and where, you know, I mean, I, I'm sure everyone else is just as busy as me with, you know, commitments, job, all of that. It's just, you know, oh, well, it could bounce back to me, I have a project deadline at work, that takes priority, so I'll have to let this slide for two weeks. Again, I go back to, that's not fair. If that discussion was pertinent to have now, rather than two weeks, the residents get cheated to a degree, because we should have had that discussion two weeks ago. So that's, that's my-
Well, listening to what Mr. Simonean just said, you know, again, this is a draft policy intended to, to meet Mr. Holstrom's request. You know, we may be willing to just somewhat compromise, and if, if a member item is expected to have a vote, certainly that night, you want to have any documents and a proposed motion, so that everyone knows what we're discussing. It's a, if it's a member item on the school budget and the impact on, you know, the, the impact the Bay Path Assessment will have, that's enough to have a discussion, but certainly members need enough information and supporting documents if they're expected to, to take action by vote. Mr. Holstrom?
And I think through the chair, Steve, I think you answered your own question. If I come up, if you come up with a topic, and the chairman comes back and says, "It's too vague," well, there you are. If it's too vague, now explain a little bit more about what you want to speak on, and that's all I'm looking for. Just so, just so I have some information, so I can go back and say, "Oh yeah, he's going to talk on this." Let me go back and see what I have for information, or be able to ask some questions intelligently about what he's got, instead of, geez, what is he after? I would rather know, instead of being, if she says vague, you know, ad lib or, you know, bring forward a little bit more information?
Mr. Simonean?
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I, I guess, is it, then my question would be, is it too vague for our policy, or is it too vague for open meeting law? Because open meeting law certainly supersedes anything we come up with. So if, if what a member wanted to bring here, open meeting law certainly permits, but it's not, it doesn't meet the criteria for a policy. I have, I absolutely disagree.
Well, and that's why I mentioned if you're requesting action be taken, because, you know, as chairman, whether it's me or someone else, you know, it's, it's your responsibility to be sure that all agenda items meet the requirements of the open meeting law. This is just so that all members, before they're asked to take a vote on an item, have enough information, they have the same information that all other members have, and any supporting documents that, you know, that they may have.
If a vote's going to be asked for, sure.
And that's, and that's why I mentioned the compromise, that, you know, we could word this, that, you know, all member items, you know, will continue to meet the requirements of the open meeting law. If a member is requesting that action be taken by way of a vote, and then we could, you know, reword the language. And again, this is a draft policy.
That's fine.
Open for discussion.
And the other thing, if, if an action vote is to be expected, the member is requested to provide a proposed motion, that, I think, absolutely is too restrictive, because if you, if I, if I put a motion in writing, or anyone puts a motion in writing, and then, as we've seen, and it happened here tonight, well- and then, as we've seen, and it happened here tonight, well, actually, now that we've had some discussion, that motion doesn't necessarily, is it gonna be, well, this was the proposed motion in writing, we're not, we can't change that, we're not gonna, we can't vote on the amended motion, or a different motion, because that's not what was provided?
And it could, and I think it would, the same as our agenda, it would be a sig, and I said proposed motion. It could be a suggested motion, just to, you know, and you could, you know, whatever the board member feels who's, who's proposing the member item. I mean, we have certainly plenty of times that, you know, the, the board may vote to authorize, you know, X, Y, Z, or the, the board may vote to appoint, not appoint, the board may vote to approve, not approve, just a similar motion to what our current agenda has.
If, if we, if we add that language to this, I, I would certainly consider it. I, I just, I'm not in favor of anything that ever handcuffs us from doing the people's business up here.
Mrs. Brotherton, did you have something? I'm sorry, I thought you had your.
No, I, I actually, I think I did too, I'm just trying to recover it. I think this all stems, Mr. Simoneon, and please correct me, fellow board members. Wasn't there a presentation that you had given to us about veterans? And we were looking for like more information? I don't know if it had to do with Veterans Day, or the Purple Heart, or something. But there was so much that you spoke about, and I, I know, I think, that particular day regarding the veterans, that I felt overwhelmed, and it would have been nice to have a hand out. Am I crazy? I probably could be, but does that ring a bell?
No, that's.
Those are two separate questions. Am I crazy?
I, I think you, through the chair, I think you've identified exactly what that is. And that, I think, is what I'm trying to get to, is so that we have enough information about what you want to speak on, so that we can, we'll have enough information in front of us, be able to discuss it. And I think a proposed motion doesn't tie our hands to anything. It's proposed.
Right.
I think that's proposed, suggested, whichever way you want to look at it. But if it's proposed, it's kind of like, I'd like to vote on, you know, impact of one line against another one. And that's all it would be. And the motion could be made at meeting, but it would be, you know, subject to the topic we're speaking on.
You know, and it could be as simple as, afterwards, like, you know, like, we had for our license hearing tonight, the board may vote to, if, if, if violation occurred, the board would vote a penalty. So, a motion could be, the, the board may vote to, in support of the member item. It doesn't have to be a real specific motion, just so that members know what they're voting on.
I don't, I don't have a problem with members understanding what they're voting on at all. I just don't want, I just don't want to paint ourselves in a corner, because it seems like we keep making policies that somewhat butt up against open meeting law, somewhat butt up against another policy. And the more restrictive you make something, sooner or later, you put yourself in that position where you either have a conflict between policies, or you're painting yourself in a corner where you can't, you don't have the freedom to do what you normally would do. And again, I, as, as I've always said, I think that does a disservice to the residents who elected us. So, if, if it's, you know, if it's not restrictive, I, I don't, I don't have a problem if, if I, and I certainly would want to provide information. And I think the thing that Mrs. Brotherton was referring to was when I spoke about the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Civil War. And it, it really was just, you know, a comment that I'd like to, you know, maybe see some sort of acknowledgement of that, and the people in the town, who, but I think, if I remember right, I think it was Mr. Holstrom that, or, Mr. Ethier, that actually came up and got into a lot of detail in, in regard to that discussion. So, you know, I, I just don't want to restrict us from being able to do what we do. And I have no problem with saying, hey, this is, this is what I want to talk about, as long as we have the ability to broaden that, that discussion where it needs to be, in, rather than say, hold on, we can't talk about that, it wasn't in here, we have to wait two more weeks to discuss that.
And I, I.
It doesn't make sense.
I don't think that's gonna happen. I really don't. You know, and I, I just, I'll just remind members that, you know, it's more information for the public as well, not just more information for Board of, Board of Selectmen members, and that benefits everyone. You know, I've had many times that people have said, you know, I followed that item, or we've seen people run up here because although the item was on the agenda, through the discussion, they've come up here. So, so certainly, we're happy as a subcommittee to, to take the board's comments into, into consideration, reword this, and then even before we, we look to have it adopted, we can reword it and bring it back to the board for some final comments. I'm not gonna propose it until all members are comfortable in voting on it. So, is there anything else on this item? Mrs. Brotherton?
I was just gonna add, Adam Cheer, that I think this kind of basically sums it up for Mr. Simoneon, that we put down the board of policies, selectmen policies, with just a briefing discussion on the draft policies.
Yeah.
You know, a synopsis of just what we're gonna.
Right, so what better time for me to discuss that thing right now?
And we did.
Exactly.
So, the second, the second policy is a proposed amendment to the formation and committee membership policy. So, so right now, we have a policy regarding the formation of committee membership and our appointments. And so, again, just going by the comments at the request of the member, kind of drafted this, I'm not sure if this is the direction you were going in. So, the thought is to be consistent, kind of treating it like a interviewing, and I look back at interviewing the town manager. You know, each member will ask the same two questions of each candidate, and the questions would be submitted so that if members have the same or similar question, they, you know, it can be sent back to them and give them an opportunity. So, so that would be a total of ten questions per member, I mean, per proposed applicant. And then each member would be allowed one question, one follow-up question, unknown, that may be triggered from the responses of those two questions. So, now, they can ask one, one follow-up question per question. So, that's an additional two questions times five, that's ten more questions. So, I certainly think twenty potential questions for an applicant is, we should have more than enough information as to whether we want to appoint them to either our two left ZBA and Finance Committee. And, and something that, you know, a couple people had mentioned, and we talked about having everyone sitting here in the room, and then calling them up by the way their names were in the packet, because the fourth candidate knew everything we were gonna ask, and maybe had some time to think about it, while the first one was kind of put on the hot seat. You know, where do you go to get your information, or whatever? So, we would also propose that anyone here for an interview for an appointment wait, like in the planning boardroom or something. So, that's, these are the proposals for this as well, if anyone has any comments on this. Mr. Simoneon?
This one I completely disagree with.
Okay.
I, I think, I think it's, I'm not even gonna say borders, this is, this is censorship to, and, and kind of disguised as, as a fair, what seems to be a fair practice, but I think that it absolutely, we're, we're given, on every single candidate, we're given information about their, their educational background, their experience, and a whole, to ask only two questions, and, and to ask the same questions that may or may not be pertinent. I'll go back to this year's appointments, where we had someone who was a real estate attorney, we had someone who was, owned his own business. I mean, how would you ask the same questions of those two people who come from completely different backgrounds? It doesn't make any sense. And we should be able to ask them questions relevant to their background and their experience, and follow up on, on, on any of the things that they say. At the same time, limiting it to this, if, if there is, if there is an example where one of us has in-depth knowledge of the type of experience that person, I, I would, I would absolutely give free rein of that person to ask more questions than anyone else, to, because they have a knowledge, you know, well, how does that tie into this? How, how do you say this experience has? This is, this just, this handcuffs us in so many ways. It may seem like it's a lot of questions, but it, it's restrictive in the fact that it only allows certain questions, and, and not questions that can be broad and to that candidate's specific experience and specific background. I, I, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Before I ask anyone else, I should have asked Mr. Holstrom this question first, where it was your request for this policy. Does this meet, because I wasn't sure where you were going on this, does this meet the spirit of what you had requested, or are we off base and you were looking for something else?
I think, I think it does. I think we're headed in the right direction. I don't know if this is quite the way we want to look at it. And I can understand Steve's concern that we don't want to tie our hands, but.
Well, this is your request, and I apologize, I should have gone to you first.
That's perfectly all right.
Why, I'm the one that.
One of the things that, the comfort level, and it was very uncomfortable to be interviewing candidates in here on the different, the Finance Committee, the only Board of Appeals, and it's almost like it's a third degree. It's not, we're not trying to get any information. It's very uncomfortable, and I don't want it to be a demeaning interview. I want to be sure we got enough information out, but it just, the reason for this policy was, my comfort level wasn't there, and it seemed like we were almost insulting some of the people that were coming back for reappointment. And I'm not sure what questions to ask of all the other people that are coming applying. And that's why I looked at this. So, I guess I want to, well, take a look at this, and I'm not quite sure about if this is the right way or not, but it looks like where it's in the direction that I would be a little bit more comfortable with.
Mr. Simoneon?
I, you know what? And I don't, I don't, through the chair, Mr. Holstrom, I don't mean this, if it sounds condescending, it is not meant to be, but I am not, our interview process is not geared towards our comfort level. It is not about us. It is about the person who is sitting there telling me that I want a position on this board, I want to, I'm, I'm a better candidate than that person. I have, over the last, over the course of the last twenty years, many times interviewed people for jobs in the companies that I've worked in. And it's never a comfortable process, because you, at the end of the day, are gonna say yes or no. And I think, I didn't choose you because this person is a better candidate. Sure, it's uncomfortable. In, in, in an ideal world, it would be a wonderful process, and everybody would leave smiling, but, you know, this, this, that speaks to the, this whole mentality now of everybody gets a trophy, and everybody wins, and we don't keep score. That's, to me, that's absolutely ridiculous. These people are coming up here, I thank them all for their, for putting themselves out there, volunteering, and being in a position. But when you sit in that chair, you open yourselves up to any relevant questions, or any relevant commentary that speaks to your background, and, and what it is that qualifies you to have this position. Because if we don't do that, we could cer, we could, we could ask questions of, and I've seen it hundreds of times, someone who is, who is great at interviewing is, you know, there's, there's millions of websites out there with, you know, basic interview questions and, and good ways to answer them, and they're very skilled, almost like an attorney is, to, in, in answering questions. And they come up here, they put on a good show, they answer three or four questions, and they go, and that's that. And there's nothing that speaks to, well, give me a little more information about this, your resume says this, or you wrote on the application that you, tell me about this, experience. How does that experience relate? That is something, that is not a question of, tell me what two plus two equals, everybody knows that. That's a question of, I want you to speak directly to your background. I don't want you to speak to his, or what you think, or what, I want you to tell me how your experience is relevant. And I, to do this eliminates all of that. Or, as I said, if there's background information that any of us has that's pertinent for the rest of the board to know regarding a can, I mean, and, and it's happened, and I'm not getting into discussion because it's an ongoing situation in the town, but we've had people in the past who certain things weren't asked because we didn't know if we could, or we shouldn't, or whatever, and it turned out bad. So, that, I, I just, we're being censored by this policy, and I disagree with it in every way, shape, or form.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get a structured interview process. We need applicants, we need volunteers more than they need us. Yes, we are gonna be the ones to appoint, but I want it structured, and I don't want them to be uncomfortable with, you know, what they're coming for. We want to get information out of them, so we can make a decision, an intelligent choice on who the, the candidate's gonna be. But it's, it hasn't been structured, it's been kind of thrown out there. And I guess it should be a little bit more professionalism in it than the structure that I have seen with the process.
I'll just say I agree with the, you know, the inconsistent questioning. I would like to see us move to a more consistent questioning. And that was the proposal for the follow-up questions. I think, I think once someone answers a question, it kind of opens that door. You know, you just said something about your background, you just said my experience, a simple word like my experience, that could trigger the, the question that you now want to ask as your follow-up question that doesn't need to be written. I mean, everyone's gonna have an opportunity to ask follow-up questions once they respond. There's going to be ten questions asked. If those ten questions don't elicit enough information to, to ask follow-up questions, then we've just asked ten poor questions. Mr. Simoneon?
I, I again disagree, because, first of all, I don't like, I don't like the fact that the comments seem to say we're not being professional. I'll tell you right now, because I, I just went through it for a considerable amount of time, most companies have gone away from traditional interview process, and what they're doing now are behavioral interviews, where they put you in specific scenarios, how do you react? And it's meant to be uncomfortable, and it's meant to see not only are you, not only are you qualified to do this position, but as we've seen up here, we kind of have to change on the fly. Can someone do that? I, I walk in here, every single time we have an appointment, every single time we have an interview, I have two or three questions written down, and immediately, as soon as we start talking to that person, they say, and, and all of a sudden, there's like three or four more. All of those questions should be asked. That person, the, we need volunteers, there's no doubt. And I, I, I can't give enough credit to the people who put themselves out there. It's not an easy thing to do, to, in any way, shape, or form. We've all been through it to a degree, because when you run for this position, you're saying, do you want me or not? Yes or no? So, they're, they're kind of in the same boat, they're just not being elected, they're being appointed. But it, it shouldn't be a comfortable process. You should have to prove that you are the best candidate for this position. Again, it shouldn't be everybody gets a trophy. Tell me why you're the best person for this job. It's not gonna be comfortable. I'm gonna treat you professionally, I'm not gonna condescend, I'm not gonna be condescending, I am not gonna talk down to you, I, I'm not gonna treat you any differently than anyone else. But if you have, if you're gonna sit up here and tell me that, hey, look at this, here's five pages of Joe Schmo's greatest accomplishments, and this is why I'm a wonderful guy, I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna go through those five pages. Joe, you said you did this, can you talk to me, tell me a little bit about this, and how does this relate? How does this make you a great candidate for the ZBA, or, or, or the Finance Committee? And if, if Joe's gonna write that, just like if you go to apply for a job, and you're gonna hand in your resume, everything on there better be factual, because everything on there is fair game for a question. And that's, and that's where I'm coming from. You better be ready to answer a question about anything you submitted in front of me. You put your name on that application, you told me these are all the things that you're great at, and we should be able to question you on any aspect of what you just put in front of us. So, you have to prove that you are the best candidate for the job, because that's what I'm looking for. I'm not trying to be unfair in any way, shape, or form. I don't care who comes through that door. Tell me why you're the best candidate. And any question about that should be fair game, anything, anything about what you say once you sit up there and start answering questions should be fair game. To do this completely handcuffs that ability, and, and, and like I said, if there's, if there's information that should be shared with the board, then that is, then that also can now, now not come out because there's no discussion. It's just, let me ask you my two questions, I might have one follow-up, and I move on to the next person. That, that doesn't make any sense to me. It, it, it leaves so much off the table that, like I said, someone who's just really good at answering questions can muddle their way through it, look good, and the person who might be the better candidate, because they can actually give you that, you know, it's the difference between someone who can write a great essay ques- the difference between someone who can write a great essay question and someone who can give you the facts.
I just want to be clear on what you just, comment you just made. You don't get your two questions and your follow-up and you move on, you get your two questions, a follow-up, and then Mrs. Brotherton gets two questions, and you get follow-up on her questions, Mr. Holstrom gets questions, you get follow-up on his questions, Mr. Grossman asks questions, you get follow-up on his questions. It's not just follow-up on your questions.
Understood. But if, if during the course of that conversation, something, something they say makes me look again, I, oh, I didn't see that the first time around, or, well, you just said this. It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily follow-up, it's a whole new question, a whole new line of questioning. I can't ask it because it wasn't on the paper and it's not technically a follow-up question. It, it doesn't make sense to me. Censorship is just wrong. And this, this censors us, it takes away our opportunity to vet out the best candidate. I'm not trying to be unfair, I'm trying to get people to answer questions for me about what their background is and why you think you're better than the other three people sitting back there or the other three people sitting in the other room. You tell me. I want you to come up here, I want you to tell me why you're the rock star and I should pick.
No, I think we have, Mr. Grossman, did you have anything to add before we take the po- okay. So I certainly think we have enough feedback to take it back to review.
Thank you.
On the, um, entertainment policy, I, you know, this is a really comprehensive policy, we, we may want to hold this. This is more looking at an, an entertainment license, if you're, you know, you're having entertainment. I know our liquor license policy says that everyone has to have an entertainment license, if they have a television, if they have music. Read through this carefully, I, I think with the late hour, I don't think that we're going to take up a full discussion on this. We did have some discussion on the application, and the application may trigger some additional required information if it were an outdoor license. So, yes.
Is this proposed?
It's...
Not existing?
It's not existent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we have no, we have no entertainment policy currently.
Oh, all right, that's true.
But we have a requirement that all liquor license applicants, I mean, holders have. So if, um, if members can look this over, think about what the, um, the application would look like and what type of information we want on the application, um, I think that would help us with this one. Anything else on the policies? We did it gift acceptance, we have no proclamations, we handled the request to begin the street acceptance. Are there any member, additional member items or comments?
Hold on a minute.
Mr. Simoneon?
Just a, a question through the chair, I, I guess the town manager would probably be, um, at, at our last meeting, we, um, we heard, you know, we had discussion about the, the wind turbine, and, um, I think, I guess I didn't realize it at the time, but when I, I went back through to gain some more facts from that, what was presented to us, that, was that submitted by Mr. Ringardt? That was his opinion on the wind turbine project? What we had at our last meeting, that, when we had that discussion?
He submitted his own.
Okay.
Through the chair, I believe there were two documents. One was a PowerPoint presentation that was presented by the consultant to the project, and the other was a commentary by Mr. Ringardt, I believe, I think he submitted it in writing.
He did.
All right, that's, yeah, we had...
I'm not sure, you know, and we would have to check. I don't know if he submitted anything writing, but you have, we're handed a packet prior to the meeting from the consultant, and that was the analysis of the data.
I believe he did.
Um, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, I kind of feel like we haven't really heard from the town or from the Alternative Energy Committee, you know, input from them on this. I mean, they've been working on this for what now, six years, I think, and, and I know the town's got some skin in the game. So, I mean, I would, I would like to kind of hear the town side and, and maybe some sort of presentation from the Alternative Energy Committee as well, like what their thoughts are on, because we've seen the engineer, we've seen, you know, the information that Mr. Ringardt and, and, you know, his concerns, and I just kind of like to see what, you know, where, where the town is in this, and, and, you know, some feedback also from the Alternative Energy Committee. So I, I'm not going to speak for the whole board, but that's just me, and if we could have something, if, if the, you know, at, at our next meeting, or, you know, as soon as they can get something together, I, I...
Uh, through the chair, we can talk to the Wind, um, Alternate Energy Committee and ask them when they could come in and speak. I know the chairman of the committee was at the last meeting and he did speak, Mr. Latukas, but he was, as he said, he was speaking as a member of the committee, but, you know, we can talk to him about getting a statement together on behalf of the committee.
Yeah, if they have something, I could just kind of take back and read them, I, you know, listen to them, but then also, you know, kind of digest it myself. I, we haven't heard from them in a while, I know, so I just kind of like to get their take on where things are and what's going on.
Anything else on the member items? Hearing none, we've handled town manager items, we have no tabled items, there's no one here for public comment. We have the minutes of January 14th, 2013. Are there any corrections or omissions?
None, I saw.
The chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.